Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Thursday, July 31st, Special Meeting of the Santa Barbara City Council. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Harmon?
Here.
Councilmember Santa Maria?
Here.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Here.
Mayor Potem Friedman?
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Present.
Councilmember Jordan?
Here.
Mayor Rouse?
Here.
All right, very good. Before we get into the thing that announces, make a few announcements. A lot of you folks were at the Franklin Center earlier, so the same thing, we're going to ask for everybody to be civil and respectful. I'm going to ask you not to hold up signs anywhere besides on the very back because that gets in people's way and it's also can be kind of irritating, so please don't do that. And please don't clap, please don't boo. Let's give everybody a chance, give everybody a chance to say what they need to say and have respect for one another. Everybody was great at the Franklin Center, hopefully we can continue that same atmosphere here. That being said, we also listened to you at the Franklin Center, which is why we're here today. And we took notes, and the staff report reflects the things that we asked staff to look at after the comments at the Franklin Center. So with that being said, there's going to, each speaker is going to get one minute. You can combine three follow speakers for a total of five minutes, okay? But we're going to try to get to this so that you can get back to council and we can talk about the substance of the issue, all right? If you had something to say at the Franklin Center before, it's up to you, but if you have, please don't repeat yourself if you can, because once again, we did take notes and we did record that, and we're recording today, so let's move on with that then. I'm going to, in order of, this will be a little bit different today, we're going to start out with the city administrator giving her presentation, and then we're going to move to your comments, and then we'll come back to council for questions and deliberation. All right, are we good? And, and that's it, yes, the special meeting, so it's just public comment for items listed on the agenda today. Well, then, we're going to turn it over to Ms. McAdoo to give the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. John, can I ask you to pull up the presentation, just click on the link there? Can you help me? Yeah, that'd be awesome, thank you. So as the mayor mentioned, we have a number of items that the council asked us to follow up on from the town hall that was held a couple of weeks ago. And we have three recommended actions, if you could, next slide, for today. The first is that the council adopt a resolution condemning aggressive and non-transparent federal immigration enforcement tactics and reaffirming the city's commitment to the California Values Act and to providing a self and welcoming community for all residents, visitors, and workers. Next slide. And that second, that council provide direction to staff on the allocation of financial resources in support of our immigrant-serving organizations in the community. And lastly, that the council adopt changes to the city of Santa Barbara legislative platform that would enable the mayor and council to advocate on behalf of immigrant communities on legislation at the state and federal level. So I'll go to the first one. The first, in attachment one to the staff report, there is a resolution prepared by the city attorney's office, as mentioned, that would condemn the aggressive and non-transparent federal immigration enforcement tactics and reaffirming our city commitment to the California Values Act. So that is up for consideration. There was an initial request for an emergency declaration, and I want to just point out that emergency declarations can only be enacted when there are specific events that occur as defined in the Santa Barbara Municipal Code, and that chapter is outlined in the staff report, as well as in state law. And so it's, those emergency declarations can only be adopted when there is a specific set of circumstances, like a natural disaster, and they can't be declared based on the actions of another political subdivision or branch of the United States government. So we have drafted a resolution that we hope reinforces what the intent of the council was, to send a message about the council and the city's commitment to our immigrant population here in the, in the community and to continuing to support, support those individuals. Next, the, was the consideration for funding either 805 undocu fund or other immigrant-serving organizations in our community. And I wanted to highlight a couple of things. Attachment four to the, and the city council report outlines a number of nonprofit organizations that the city currently funds that have indicated that they do provide services to our, our immigrant community. And the total amount that is provided in this coming fiscal year for those organizations is about 1.75 million. Obviously, because of the California Values Act, we cannot ask for clients' immigration status when we're providing those services, so we can't break down exactly how much money is provided to immigrant community members through those organizations, but they have indicated that there is that provision of service. We do fund the Immigrant Legal Defense Center of Santa Barbara County, and that funding for this coming year is $22,240. And just as a, I know there has been a discussion of coordination and collaboration with other agencies, and just as a, from what I understand, the city of Carpinteria has appropriated about $10,000. The city of Galita took action to appropriate $100,000, and I believe the county appropriation was about $300,000, if I remember correctly from my conversations with other organizations. I did want to highlight on the next slide that we have updated the city's financial forecast. There were a number of factors since the adoption of the budget that have come into play that we wanted to highlight for, for the council and for other members who are watching this, this meeting. And this is also included in, as an attachment to the staff report. So when we initially recommended the budget earlier this spring, there was a projected surplus of about $725,000. And with the addition of the $2 million of funding for the local housing trust fund, the actual adopted budget became a deficit of $1.6 million. In order to comply with the council's reserve policy, we would need to appropriate an additional 4.48 million, so that brings us to a net deficit of about $6 million as part of the adopted budget. Since that, we anticipate, given some tentative agreements and other labor negotiations that are occurring, an additional $3 million impact on top of that adopted budget. And then, the other thing that we are sort of anticipating or waiting to hear is what is going to happen to our community development block grant funding from the federal government. Right now, it is included in the federal budget, but again, that does not get adopted till October. As we had mentioned to the council during budget preparation, we didn't, our nonprofit community relies on those dollars starting on July 1st, so we did not think it was fair to come back and, and take those dollars from them this year if we lose that federal funding, so we would have to backfill those with general fund dollars, as well as the staff that support that program. However, in fiscal year '27, we would recommend if the, that federal funding is no longer available, that that backfill go away, which would also result in potential layoffs of those staff members. So that's another $1.1 million this year. So that puts us in a new position for fiscal year '26 of a deficit of about $5.9 million. And then with the additional reserve contribution, that brings us to a deficit of about $10 million for fiscal year '26. Obviously, we will need to address that, but my concern being, and my recommend, strong recommendation is that if the council wants to appropriate additional dollars to any of our nonprofits that serve our immigration community, that that come from the existing, either the, the $5 million that would put, was put forth for the local housing trust fund, or the housing and homelessness services, or that the council look potentially at the Measure C projects for this year. And the Measure C projects are included in the staff report, I think it is, attachment five. So that is a discussion point for the council, and obviously, happy to answer further questions about that as we get through this process. The next action that the council requested the staff to research was joining the legal challenge with the city of Los Angeles, the ACLU, and other cities. The city council has authorized the city attorney to file papers to, to join that lawsuit, and there is a hearing in mid-August about allowing additional cities such as Santa Barbara to intervene in the lawsuit, so city attorney's office has filed that paperwork. The next was, how could we partner with Santa Barbara County on actions that they took on their July 5th Board of, July 15th Board of Supervisors meeting? I have met with the county executive officer, the Galita city manager, and the Carpinteria city manager, so that we are coordinating across our jurisdictions, and we're continuing to have, you know, text and email exchanges about different activities that are occurring. I did send the, a similar Freedom of Information Act request to the ICE acting director on July 28th, which mirrored the county executive's letter, that is included in the agenda packet as attachment six. And then, the next is the recommended changes to our legislative platform, which would enable us to advocate on behalf of our immigrant communities. So we have some language on the next two slides to reflect, next slide, John? Thank you. So here's the language that we would add. I'm not going to read through it, but I think it sort of gives us that flexibility to take positions on legislation that is proposed. And again, attachment, I think it's attachment seven to the staff report includes a synopsis of all of the current pending legislation at the state level regarding immigration-related issues, and so that is there for everyone's reference. And then, lastly, the last ask was for additional requests for use of city facilities and distribution of informational resources. And I wanted to highlight, and I know the city attorneys can, can also comment on this as we go forward, but there was a memo that was attached, attachment two to the staff report, which talks about the conflict between the city and the supremacy clause of the Constitution and the city's inability to interfere with federal activities, including immigration enforcement. And so that can be widely interpreted, and so we really need to be careful about the funding that we're providing, the, the resources that we're providing, and also just the activities that we're engaging in. So things like asking our police officers to interfere in immigration enforcement activities would be in violation of that. And then, the, there was a request that our police officers distribute red cards, and again, we have more description of the concerns with that in the staff report, but we are committed to creating immigration resource cards that could be voluntarily distributed that would have contact phone numbers or other information that would help community members in terms of seeking assistance. In terms of the use of city facilities at a reduced cost, again, a pretty comprehensive analysis of that in the staff report, but we cannot offer city facilities free of charge for trainings, and again, if that becomes a designated public forum, which then we would have to allow any group with any message to be able to be in that room, even if it was, you know, a competing message, or the, the opposite of the wanting to train volunteers for the Rapid Resource Network. So that's the concern there. We do have reduced rates for nonprofit organizations, and we do have opportunities to assist with insurance requirements, and so happy to work with organizations to, to, to look at that. I will say that staff met with members of the Immigration Coalition and a number of our nonprofit groups last week, and I think one of the things that we would suggest going forward is a continuation of those meetings on a regular basis, so that we can try to figure out how we can collaborate and work together within the legal constraints that we are bound by. And so, I think with that, I think we're just going to reiterate the staff recommendations, and I will stop my presentation there, and thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay, thank you, Madam Administrator. So we're going to move into public comment. Once again, a couple of things, I'm going to ask again, make sure everybody's civil, respectful, and we have, all opinions are to be heard and respected, and no booing, no clapping, along those lines. Number two is, we do have a prior commitment, so there'll be a hard stop at 2:15, no matter where we are, we've got a bunch of folks online that want to comment as well. When I'm calling out the names, I'm going to call out the name and the person right behind them on deck, and so we can move through this, just like we did at the Franklin Center. Going to, we're going to say that right now, we're going to cut off receiving new speaker slips, I've almost got the entire time filled up with speaker slips at the moment, and also online, Mr. Clerk, anybody that hasn't raised their hand now is just going to be, going to be listening for the time being. Okay, I'm going to start out with, now the first speaker is going to have some combined time, but I'm not sure who donated the time to Primitiva Hernandez, and I need to have three people that are donating their time to Primitiva that have filled out speaker slips. Okay, may I, may I just get three of your names, please, that you have speaker slips in?
Hillary.
Okay, Lee, Hillary, I've got.
Ana.
Ana, okay.
Hillary.
Thank you so much, okay. And so, Primitiva, you have five, I know, there she is, I saw her come in. Would you come on up, please, and Mr. Clerk, would you give me five minutes on the timer, please?
Where's the timer? Right here, okay. Good, good morning, afternoon, not sure what time it is, Mayor and, and Council here. First of all, I want to thank you for taking the time to meet with us, listen to what the community is, is asking. I will also like to thank the support to advocate for the state policies that we are bringing forth to you. It, it, it just gives it a different influence when we have the city's support, so I really want to thank you for that, the resolution condemning, that is also a starting point. And I really hope that the city of Santa Barbara can take a similar stance to city of Carpinteria, that whatever is started here is only the starting, only the beginning, because we, I don't need to mention how much dollars are being allocated to ICE, so if you, if you think you've seen horror, wait, wait and see what's, what's coming. So, in regards to the emergency assistance that we are requesting, the funding, I didn't hear a dollar amount, but we, we are asking for 500,000 minimum due to the allocation from the city of Carpinteria, city of Galita, budget size and comparisons to the city of Santa Barbara, population as well. And any, any dollars that get allocated to 805 undocu fund, we want those dollars to go towards our emergency assistance fund. We don't need any dollars to be allocated towards our rapid response. Every dollar we want that comes from the cities to go back to the families, because rent is due tomorrow. Rent is due tomorrow, right? So, all of the families that were impacted in Carpinteria, and also all the broken families here in Santa Barbara, they still have bills to pay, they still have to put food on their tables, and they still have to pay rent tomorrow, or they're going to be evicted. So it's only fair that we support them right now. We don't need dollars for 805 undocu fund, we need them for the community. Also, joining the ACLU lawsuit, that is also going to give strength to our community. We know that the current lawsuit that is in place is covering Ventura County and Santa Barbara County, but we did nothing to deserve that protection in terms of our cities and counties. That's what, because of the work that LA City did, and the county, and we just happened to benefit from that. So we need to start also doing the work to say that we are protected under that lawsuit, so I'm glad that you're going to be joining that. And when it comes to interfering, I want to make it very clear that there's many volunteers right here that have been patrolling the streets, that have been trained, and none of what we're doing is interfering. We are not interfering with anything. I do not know where the concern is coming from, that if you fund any of our work, or even support any of our work, that would be interfering. The rapid response information is up on the city website, I don't know if you guys knew about that, but now you know, and you better not take it down. That means that you're supporting our work. I'm, I'm just saying, you know? What's, what's the concern? What's the fear? And we're not asking the police department to interfere either. Protection is what we're asking, protection is not interfering. We're not asking for them to show up and stop federal agents, we don't do that either. We don't have the authority to do that. What we want is to ensure transparency and to hold them accountable. Why do you think that lawsuit is standing? Because of all of the people that showed up and, and showed to the community the violations, the, the aggression and the violence. So if you refer to our rapid response as interfering, you aren't on the same side as those that are condemning our actions. And lastly, I'm just going to say that what you're going to hear today is what we are asking in terms of funding, protections, unity with our city, and we know that there may be a budget deficit, but also working with the communities that right now are being impacted, the indigenous community. You have indigenous community in the city of Santa Barbara that speak Maya, that speak Nawa, just go to the streets and you'll find them. So they are asking for protection today. My ask for you is do what is right for your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Berent is going to be followed by Jaclyn Inda.
Good morning, so I have one minute. My name is Larry Berent, I'm a resident of the city, I'm speaking on behalf of indivisible Santa Barbara, 805 Undocu Fund Coalition. I'm here to express, specifically address our ask for a declaration of a state of emergency. With all due respect, I don't think the city attorney has this correct. We are not asking for the city to interfere with ICE's operations, we are asking for the city to deal with the ramifications of what ICE is doing here. If ICE came here and set a fire in De La Gera Plaza, am I to believe that you would not be allowed to put it out? It can't be the case. With more than a minute, I could meet the legal points, point by point, and I am here and I will address any questions that the council has. But the list in the ordinance is not meant to be an exclusive list of what are considered to be emergency conditions, and they're not limited to acts of God. My time is up.
Yeah.
So, that's the fastest legal analysis I have ever given in my life.
Thank you very much. Okay, I've got Jaclyn Inda and Jackie Kemp has donated, is Jackie here?
I'm sorry? I think it was Jackie Carr.
Oh, okay, yeah, didn't put my glasses on, thank you, I did. And, I'm sorry?
Jackie Lanada is also donating my minutes.
I'm sorry, the name again?
Jackie Lanada.
Okay. And your name, please?
Alyssa Mon.
Okay, so Jaclyn, you go ahead and have five minutes then, please.
Mayor, Council, my name is Jackie, I'm here on behalf of Casa de la Raza. Imagine living in so much terror that you jump off of a building in terror. How is that not an emergency? How is that not a mental health crisis? And where is the honor to the family that that person left behind? You see, it takes greatness to be volunteers and to help people respond, but it takes even bigger courage for a city to get behind them.
Give me the slips back.
I'm not going to give you sob stories, that's not what I'm here to do. I'm here to tell you that you do have the power to declare an emergency on mental health, that there is a crisis in front of you, that it doesn't matter what kind of wave happened to get there, but you do have the ability to respond now. Let me address the funding. When mudslides happened in Montecito, this was one of the first cities to act, allocate funding and resources into a foundation that then put out different types of responses in the community so that it would be effective, and so that it would be fast. They didn't look at a budget and say, hey, we've already funded agencies that have a specific mission, a specific application, and a specific way of providing service. You said there was an emergency, and you responded, and you responded with a way, in the most creative way, by giving the fund, the foundation, money to be able to allocate those resources in a collaborative way. This gave you not a whole nother process of getting to agencies that already provide service, that are already funded to do a very specific thing in their grant. You didn't reallocate their mission, you didn't reallocate what they were supposed to do. You said, no, those agencies have to continue, but we need to serve our community now, and you allocated those dollars to an agency that and you allocated those dollars to an agency that could do its own vetting. This isn't that type of kind of, you don't have that kind of scenario right now. You don't have the kind of scenario where your nonprofits, who have continued to do the work, will continue to do the work, great, we've done it, let's give them a few more dollars. This is a different type of emergency. So I ask you to think about it in that way. I understand that space is limited and that people need the resources, but guess what, community? Casa de la Raza is open, and we are definitely allowing all this space to be used for free, for organizing, for training. And that took partnership. That took partnership with the city, and I respect that. $500,000 is not enough, and I know that the city has it in its reserves to be able to allocate that in an emergency, because it's done it time and time again, not just with floods from Montecito, but also for the resources provided for COVID. Yes, it's important to know that our agencies and our communities will step up and that we support everything that you're doing with the ACLU lawsuit. That's important. But Galita asked their sheriffs to show up, to record with their body cams, and to store that information, because we're looking at federal lawsuits in which they could tap into if they have evidence. We're not asking for your officers to do anything else but at least show up, hit record, and store that information where it could potentially be used instead of doing surveys with chambers about how impacts to economic development might happen in order to join a lawsuit. You need the evidence. Any case law will tell you. So why not ask our police department to show up, to be present, to record, and to store that information so it doesn't get lost? It's simple. It's called partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Kacha Baradas, followed by Ashley Farrell. Kacha? I think I got the name right? Or did you donate your time? You donated, I'm sorry, thank you, I appreciate that. I'm trying to get organized up here. So Ashley Farrell. And you have Jennifer Sanchez, is she here? And Laura is donating her time as well, so you have four minutes.
Thank you.
Give me four, please, Mr. Clerk. Ms. Farrell, go right ahead.
Thank you for listening to my words. This administration seems unwilling to recognize the strength, beauty, and contribution of this vital and essential sector of our population. The long list of attributes the Hispanic community possesses include kindness, loyalty, grit, work ethic, and deep family and community bonds. They deserve our gratitude, and instead, they're being hunted like prey. Our communities are in crisis. We're witnessing raids carried out by masked, unvetted agents, spreading fear and putting all of our lives in danger. These rogue agents have been given unchecked power with no accountability, and their character and qualifications are highly suspect. Come October, they will be given hundreds of billions of tax dollars to continue this terror campaign. As this escalates, the resurgence of the darkest parts of our history are unfolding before our eyes. What is our red line? Roadblocks in our city streets, militarized men breaking into homes, raids in our schools and hospitals, when businesses are shuttered? We feed the nation. We are watching a preventable economic disaster unfold. If this portion of our workforce is either kidnapped or chooses to leave out of fear, what is the plan? There is no plan. We need solutions to protect our communities and our economy. We need a path to citizenship. The trauma inflicted by these raids will be long-lasting and felt by all of us. The facilities people are being disappeared to are inhumane, and there's evidence of human rights abuses and torture. These operations are funded with our tax dollars, and their goal is to fill beds and to funnel our money into for-profit prisons. This is unacceptable, this is un-American, and this is not who we are. This is a moral moment. Our community members are already answering the call to provide food assistance, transportation, legal aid, support for those, and support for those being terrorized. But we cannot do this alone. We need your help, and we need you to stand with us. So I ask, what can you do to help us fight back? If we don't push back, we know this will escalate. What are the steps needed to begin to create legislation that allows for expedited and feasible paths to citizenship or legal status? Who is working on behalf of the people most at risk in our community, our essential workers? And how can you support them with funding, legal resources, and public protection? Is there a system in place to record, document, and publicly denounce these abuses? How can we require these unidentifiable agents in unmarked vehicles to prove they are legitimate? How can we protect our residents from rogue operations and potential copycat criminals? And where is the emergency proclamation we discussed? We are calling on you as the leaders in this community, the lawmakers, and as fellow human beings to stand with us, to stand beside us, to work with us to find solutions to protect this community. What will be written in the history books about this moment, our moment? Thank you.
Thank you. Whitney Rubison, followed by Steve Epstein.
Thank you, city council members. I'm Whitney Rubison, speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters today. We thank you for all of the time you've been spending listening to our community members, but we need more. The League recognizes the urgent need to protect immigrants and farmworkers as part of our community. We urge the city to be transparent and coordinate closely with our trusted local partners, 805 Undocu Fund, and ensure that families receive rapid alerts. And then allocate emergency funds, yes, but please don't touch our local housing trust fund or our Housing and Homelessness Fund, which are vital to our long-term economic community stability. The League's new Immigration Task Force stands ready to support public education and community coordination to ensure the city's actions reflect our values of protection, dignity, and equity for all of its residents. Please protect our neighbors. In these unprecedented times, we need you to be courageous. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Epstein, followed by Vicky Shart.
Mayor Rouse, I'm giving my time to Jared Goran.
Okay, and Mr. Goran, do you have a slip in?
I do.
Okay, then when your name comes up, I'll, Mr. Epstein's, Vicky Shart, followed by Azuela Cabrera.
Good afternoon. My name is Vicky Shart. I am plain folk. I am happy to be here to say that on the Fourth of July, I read the Constitution. I am extremely concerned about what I see happening in our community around immigration and enforcement of immigration, and that people are not following the golden rule. I appreciate that everybody who has spoken so far is coming together with a story I'd like to share. I believe in some of our institutions that I see are very much at risk and under attack. If you see a moose in the woods, it's huge. It can protect itself on a one-thing thing being directed at it. You get a pack of wolves around that moose, one goes for one section, one for the other, one for the other. That huge creature is brought down. I see this happening. Are we gonna be the moose, or are we gonna be the wolves?
Thank you. Azuela Cabrera, followed by Angelisa Sanchez.
Buenas tardes, concejales y alcalde. Mi nombre es Oila Cabrera. Yo apoyo asignar los 500 mil para fondos de defensa legal y asistencia de emergencia para familias afectadas por las heredadas de ICE. Apoyar legislación que fortalece los derechos y las protecciones de los inmigrantes. Protecciones para nuestros hijos en las escuelas, guarderías, maestros y maestras, y muchas familias trabajadoras. Y por eso apoyo a que asignen 500 mil para asistencia de emergencia. Gracias.
Gracias. Angelisa Sanchez, followed by Jorge Ortiz.
Good afternoon, council members. Mayor, my name is Angelisa. I'm a community organizer with CAUZ. First, thank you to those of you who voted in favor of joining the ACLU lawsuit challenging unlawful enforcement. This was a good first step, but there's still plenty. You, Ms. Harmon, Ms. Santa Maria, Ms. Snudden, Mayor, Mr. Friedman, Gutierrez, Mr. Jordan. There's still plenty you can do. We are your constituents, your community members, your neighbors, and we're here to demand you do what is necessary to ensure the well-being and safety of those most vulnerable. We're here to urge you to declare a state of emergency in response to the ongoing ICE raids in our communities, and this is an emergency, contrary to what the city administrator is suggesting. With respect to allocation of financial resources, we strongly recommend 500,000 to be allocated for legal defense and emergency assistance from Measure C funding. These financial resources should not come from the funds recently allocated to the local Housing Trust Fund or the Flexible Housing and Homelessness Fund. Housing and immigration are two sides of the same coin. I recently had a woman named Lydia tell me, if Trump doesn't kick me out of this country, the high rents will. I value your efforts, and we look forward to your leadership during these difficult times.
Thank you. Jorge Ortiz, followed by Fernando Martinez.
Buenas tardes, miembros alcalde y concejales. Mi nombre es Jorge Toledo Ortiz. Soy el director comunitario de labor con el proyecto Misteco Indígena. Estoy aquí en representación de MICOT y como miembro de la coalición 805 Immigrant. Ver a nuestros niños de nueve meses ser separados de sus papás me parte el corazón. De siete, ocho meses, nueve meses hasta un año, las heredadas que hubo recientemente, mucha gente fue separada de sus hijos, entonces estamos aquí para poder declarar un estado de emergencia a la Ciudad de Santa Barbara para proteger a nuestros niños, a nuestra comunidad. Verlos ser perseguidos como criminales me parte el corazón. Solamente venimos a trabajar honradamente a este país, a ser grande este país, a ser grande este estado, a ser grande este condado, y a ser grande esta ciudad. Santa Barbara ha sido construida por trabajadores agrícolas, trabajadores inmigrantes, así de que honremos lo que están haciendo ellos. Gracias.
Gracias. Fernando Martinez, followed by Teresa Suarez.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. My name is Fernando Martinez. I'm here on behalf of MICOP and the 805 Immigrant Coalition. As many of you know, these past few months have been devastating for our immigrant community. The recent raids in Carpinteria, Ventura have torn families apart, especially the vulnerable farmworking community. As many people gather in Santa Barbara to celebrate fiestas, let's remember, many of the performers, vendors, workers are the ones making this event possible. And those are the very people who are being targeted by ICE for being brown, for being immigrant, and for simply existing. I urge the council to join the ACLU lawsuit against unlawful ICE enforcement, allocate the $500,000 for legal and emergency relief for those who are suffering. Let's follow what Goleta did, allocating at least $100,000 for community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Suarez, followed by Javier, and I believe it says Mondan, but I might have that wrong. Teresa Suarez?
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Teresa Suarez. I'm one of the coordinators for the Take Your Youth program with MICOP and member of the 805 Immigration Coalition. We're calling on the City of Santa Barbara to take immediate actions in response to the humanitarian crisis caused by recent ICE enforcement, as you may know. We urge you to declare a state of emergency because our immigrants' families are living in fear and children are being separated from their families. I'm gonna jump right into the youth experience, which is, one of our youth shared that she was approached by ICE agents at her apartment complex while heading to the pools with her friends. They were stopped by an agent asking for their building manager, later the same agent with three others now wearing badges and questioning the girls again, this time asking a resident, even describing his family, a mother, and a child. The girls were frightened, and when they looked inside the agent's vehicle, they saw that best labeled ICE and stacks of documents, yet the agents continued to question them. This is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Javier, and I believe the last name is Mondan, if I've got that correct. You can please correct me when you do, and followed by Raúl Olivera.
Hi there, yeah, it's Javier Mondan. Yes, thank you, city council, thank you for having me. My name's Javier Mondan, and I'm also a youth coordinator with MICOP. And I'm a member of the 805 Immigration Coalition and a proud member of the Misteco community, indigenous community. Each week, our organization hosts a group of indigenous youth in Santa Maria where we support and guide youth, shape their community. Honestly, it's an easy job, because these youth are very passionate and driven to shape their communities. But this hope is shaken. These same passionate, hilarious, and very driven youth are now silencing themselves out of fear of their families. On May 25, 2020, we all heard George Floyd yell out "Mama" in his final state, in his final moment. It was a cry that's universal. We hear this in Gaza, and we hear this in our community now. While you can't interfere with ICE agents, you can definitely support our community by allocating money.
Thank you. That's time. Thank you. Raúl Olivera, followed by Juvenal.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name's Raúl Olivera, I'm part of Proyecto Misteco Indígena, proud member of the Misteco community too, and also a member of the 805 Immigrant Coalition here in Santa Barbara County. We, as a council member, to stand with our community, this is the time to stand with our community. The Santa Barbara, we know it's a welcome community. It's a unique community, it's a diverse community, and that's why we make our county unique. Mixed families are being affected, are being targeted as criminal, and people with mass faces are kidnapping our community members. And this is a time to stand what's right, to follow the law. We ask you to stand and take action to declare the state of emergency here in the Santa Barbara County in response to the humanitarian crisis caused by recent ICE enforcement, and join the ACLU lawsuit challenging unlawful constitutional immigration enforcement. And please, allocating funds to support your community members. This is the right time to stand on the right side of the story. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Juvenal, followed by Ronaldo Rodriguez.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Juvenal Solano, director de Organizando Comunidad, y estoy aquí en representación de MICOT y como miembro de la coalición de inmigrantes 805. Debido a los operativos de ICE que han estado pasando en nuestras ciudades, la vida de nuestra comunidad ha sido afectada en todos los ámbitos, tanto económicos como de salud mental. La separación de familias indiscriminadamente en contra de nuestras familias trabajadoras agrícolas está dejando un trauma generacional en nuestros hijos. Personalmente, visité a un padre que quedó solo con su hijo de tres años, el cual llora todas las noches buscando el abrazo y el beso de buenas noches de mamá. Quien fue deportada ese 10 de julio, que queda en la historia como uno de los días más tristes de nuestra comunidad trabajadora agrícola. En estos tiempos difíciles, debemos unirnos como una sola comunidad y hacer cambios que paren con la separación de nuestras familias, asignando los 500 mil en fondos de defensa legal y asistencia de emergencia para las familias afectadas. Por tanto, urgimos a la Ciudad de Santa Barbara para tomar acción en proteger a nuestros campesinos que ponen las frutas y los vegetales en nuestras mesas.
Okay, Ronaldo Rodriguez, followed by Alisa Mullin.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Reynaldo Rodríguez, organizador comunitario con el proyecto Misteco Indígena. Hoy vengo ante esta junta de concejales en apoyo a la petición ya planteada de esta coalición de este 805, y mira, nuestra comunidad trabajadora vive hoy en día la peor pesadilla de su vida, al ver tantas familias quebradas, bebés que se quedan solos sin sus padres. Se imagina cómo van a crecer estos niños? Qué delitos cometieron estos niños para estar viviendo esta pesadilla ante esta política racista? Hoy estoy aquí para pedirle que nos unamos todos a esta exigencia para que haya justicia para todos. Nuestra comunidad agrícola, su único delito es trabajar duro todos los días sin importar las condiciones del tiempo, lluvioso, frío, calor extremo, para que cada uno de nosotros tengamos la comida en nuestras mesas. Pero también hoy no nos olvide aportamos el impuesto a esta ciudad y también a esta gran nación. Todos los seres humanos merecen ser tratados con dignidad y un debido proceso legal, y no como criminal como hoy tratan de catalogarlo por el simple hecho de color. Pido a que nos unamos. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. Alisa Mullin, followed by Maria Elena López. You gave your time. Thank you for reminding me. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Maria Elena López, followed by Emma Vega.
Haku, you are standing, living, and working on unceded, stolen lands of our Schumash community, our people past, present, and future. You have benefited from and continue to benefit from the theft of land, people, language, and culture by not acting and supporting us to protect and support our undocumented relatives. You are supporting the perpetuation of theft, theft of people. You are actively supporting that and today benefiting off of cultural appropriation this week for monetary purposes, and actively ignoring your responsibility to create a safe place for all of our community. We demand that you find a way to support 805 Undocu Fund, to do what this federal government is refusing to do.
Okay, Emma Vega, followed by Larry Severance.
Good afternoon. My name is Emma Leo Cervega. I am a UCSB Labor Summer Intern on MYCOP de Santa Maria. I'm here as a representative of MYCOP and as a member of the 805 Immigration Coalition. Most recently, my youngest brother asked me, "Chell, what is ICE?" He is 10 years old. I could see the concern, curiosity, but most of all, the fear in his eyes. At the moment, I felt like a terrible older sister because I couldn't protect him from the harsh reality. I had to explain to him why ICE was targeting a community and what to do if he had encountered with ICE. He had repeated back to me, "I won't run, speak, or sign anything, Chell." During my short time with MYCOP, I had the opportunity to learn and hear directly from farmworkers expressing their fear. I recently spoke with Christina, who is a farmworker. She told me, "Right now, there are picking up people. Some of us have small children. We go to work thinking about them being left alone." So today, as a granddaughter of immigrants, I asked you to join the ACLU lawsuit challenging unlawful unconstitutional immigration enforcement actions and to allocate $500,000 in the funding for legal defense and emergency assistance for families. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Severance, followed by Dan Black.
Good afternoon. Larry Severance, I'm on the board of CLU Santa Barbara and offering comments today that are reflective of CLU's position. We have an immigrants' justice work group. We have an affordable housing or housing justice work group. Justice for immigrants is perhaps expressed best by due process. We're urging you to support the immigrant community by funding Immigrant Legal Defense Center, Immigrant Hope, and also 805 Undocu Fund. How you fund is important. We brought before you concerns about housing justice and affordable housing. You voted to support affordable housing in your budget. Don't undo that in order to also support immigrant justice. Take a look at Measure C. When you look at the reserve policy, it's about physical concerns like fires and floods, but these are social justice concerns. I urge you to reconsider what is an emergency under your reserve policy, and look for a loan there as another possible source. Thank you.
Diane Black, followed by Jose Ortu Gagoz. Wait, Diane Black? She's not here? Okay. Jose, come on up. And following Jose would be Rob Fredericks.
As we all know, historically, this great nation was built by immigrants. And everybody in this room, every single person in this room, we have bloodlines and descendants from immigrants. This nation is still being built by immigrants, whether they were born here legally documented or not. The whole premise is to go after undocumented individuals who have committed heinous crimes, like those involved with MS-13, which now has gotten out of hand. Now, those who are undocumented, who come here to work, to live, and to build this nation, they are being arrested. They haven't committed any crime, maybe a traffic violation, that's it. And they're being whisked away, you know, by our federal government officials, ICE and FBI. This is not fair.
Thank you.
The famous word of Scottish, Sir William Wallace, "Freedom",
Thank you.
before he was executed.
Rob Fredericks is next up, and have Pat Wheatley donating her time. Pat's still here? Yes, I see her. Thank you. You have two minutes, Mr. Fredericks.
Thank you. The housing authority serves many immigrant families, and we share in the heartbreak and outrage over recent aggressive federal immigration enforcement actions. These tactics have shaken our community, and we agree that more resources must be directed towards supporting immigrant families so they can live, work, and go to school without fear. We are deeply concerned with the suggestion of reallocating funds away from the local Housing Trust Fund and the Flexible Housing and Homelessness Fund. Just weeks ago, council reaffirmed these housing investments in the face of an unprecedented housing crisis. Pitting housing needs against immigrant services is a false choice. Our community needs both. I do want to point out that your council agenda report notes that, quote, "There is a significant risk that the federal government will not continue to fund the Community Development Block Grant Program," end quote. This concern over CDBG funding cuts appear to be overstated. The House of Representatives passed out a committee on July 13th, CDBG funded at $3.3 billion, which is level with current appropriations. The Senate finalized its appropriations on July 24th, setting CDBG at $3.1 billion. So there is virtually no risk of CDBG not being funded for 2026. Through the budget reconciliation process, CDBG will either be funded at current levels or at worst, see a 6% decrease. Therefore, the $1.14 million that is being suggested as adding to the deficit is not accurate. At worst, you would see about a $68,000 added to the deficit of CDBG to be reduced by 6% and you elected to maintain the CDBG funding levels. We stand in solidarity with our immigrant community and urge you to find ways to fund these vital services without retreating from your commitment to addressing the housing crisis. We can and must do both. Thank you.
Thank you. Chrissy Lozano, followed by Reyna Angel.
Good afternoon. I represent 33 leaders in our community, and we submitted a letter yesterday to Attorney General Bondi. And the letter states, "We respectfully request the Department of Justice immediately launch a formal investigation into coordinated actions by Santa Barbara County and its cities which appear to intentionally obstruct federal immigration enforcement, potentially violating 18 U.S.C. 1505 and 1512, and breaching public officials' constitutional oath. We request your support in this attempt to illicit wrongful action by Santa Barbara County Sheriff Bill Brown. On July 25th, the Santa Barbara Independent published an open letter by Congressman Salud Carvajal, joined by 28 local officials, urging Sheriff Brown to de-escalate federal ICE operations in the region. This letter explicitly encourages law enforcement to resist or interfere with lawful federal action undermining enforcement of federal immigration law. More importantly, this campaign goes beyond words. Santa Barbara County and the cities of Santa Barbara, you can read the letter, it's in your inbox."
All right, Reyna Angel, followed by Dr. Andrea Medina.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Reyna Angel, and I want to support the ACLU lawsuit. I also want to give my support for us giving $500,000 in funding for immigration resources. I also would like Santa Barbara to do something about, similar to what LA is trying to do, where we will not support ICE wearing masks, and we will not support their use of force, and they won't be using unmarked cars. Also, if we can have them have proper identification, badges that they show us, otherwise it could just be anyone who's kidnapping people, and we need to know who they are. Furthermore, I work in education, and I want all of our children to be safe.
Thank you. Dr. Andrea Medina, followed by Jarrett Goran.
Good afternoon. I am Andrea Medina, faculty at UCSB and staff at Buen Vecino, where we serve on the steering committee of the 805 Immigrant Rapid Response Network. I am here as an immigrant to join in the demands that Primitiva, Angelisa, Fernando, and many have presented to you. I urge you to declare a state of emergency in response to the horrendous ICE raids that we're seeing, to actively join the ACLU lawsuit for the half a million dollar fund at minimum for legal defense and emergency assistance, and for transparent and immediate communication between the SBPD and the 805 Immigrant Rapid Response Network and school districts. This communication will help residents to take steps to protect their families and make informed decisions for the well-being of our community that we're here to defend. This is the very least that you can do during these times when our people are being ferociously attacked. I know you can do it, please, and I thank you in advance.
Thank you. Jarrett Goran, and having Steve Epstein dedicate his time to him. Mr. Goran, you have two minutes.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Jarrett Goran. I'm currently the chair of the Citizens Oversight Committee, but I'm here today speaking as a private citizen, not on behalf of the committee. And I'm appalled at what's happening to Hispanics in our country, in our city right now. And I'm saying Hispanics and not undocumented immigrants because ICE is harassing and detaining people based on how they look, not because they've got any sort of specific information about their immigration status. And that's unconstitutional, and it's un-American. I understand why people want the city to do something, and I'm not here to speak for or against the city providing funding to immigrant-serving organizations, but I am here because I'm concerned that you're considering diverting Measure C funds for that purpose. When you asked the voters to approve an additional sales tax for Measure C, it was a really specific promise to the community that what those funds would be used for, and it was primarily infrastructure improvements, the police station, maintaining the roads. So on several occasions now, your council has considered diverting Measure C funds for things that have nothing to do with the priorities that were promised to the voters. And it's beginning to appear that the city views Measure C as sort of its new reserve fund, and we can't allocate Measure C funds to each current issue that comes in front of the council. We have to honor the commitment that the city made to its voters. Otherwise, Measure C is going to just become some sort of generalized slush fund, and that's what people were worried about when they approved it with no sunset clause. And, you know, that seems to be what's happening now. So we do need to do something, but the city also needs to keep its promises. Thank you.
Thank you. Lenore, followed by Roxanne M.
How much time do I have?
You have a minute.
A minute. Is there a clock?
Yes, it's right in front of you there.
I was born in Springfield, Illinois, and I've always loved this country as the melting pot, the place that welcomes everyone who's suffering in the world and needs a place to build a new life. And the people that have come here over the decades and the centuries have done that. They've built this country, they've made it great, and it's taken all of us working together. And this is an emergency. And we need to stand for the love of the immigrant that the word of God asks us to have, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Roxanne M., followed by Victoria Green. To... Wait a minute, do you have a speaker's list, sir?
They didn't have any when I showed up, and she's volunteering her time to me. Is that all right?
Were they out of speaker's list back there? All right, go right ahead, Dan. You have two minutes.
Two minutes? Okay. Like what everybody said here, you know, I'm also involved very much in the community, and the community is telling me that they want to see the law enforcement to start taking action and defending immigrants because things are being allowed, like women being raped, children. If law enforcement doesn't take action, then the community is going to start defending themselves, and I sure don't want to see that. And I don't think any of you here want to see that either. So I'm asking you all to start to defend the community, or the community is going to have to defend themselves, because there's only so much people can take. I don't want that, I don't want to see that. And I'm sure you guys don't want to see that either, but it's in your guys' hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen, followed by Vanessa Taran.
You called me Victoria Green.
What's that?
You called me Victoria Green. Did you just lose my slip and all that?
Oh, I did. There you are.
There I am.
It's been... I got all sorts of you guys up here.
I think it's afternoon. Good afternoon, mayor, council members. My name is Victoria Green. I am the board president for the Santa Barbara County Immigrant Legal Defense Center, and I am also here as a part of the 805 Rapid Response Network and the 805 Coalition. I want to thank you for making a start at standing up for the community by joining the ACLU lawsuit. I also want to express my appreciation for the support that you provide to local nonprofits during normal times. The organization I work with, the Immigrant Legal Defense Center, receives a human services grant of about $22,000 this year, similar amounts in a couple previous years. That grant allows us to fund the equivalent of legal representation for undocumented, unaccompanied minors. That's it. These aren't normal times, it's crisis times. I'm out of time, and I implore you to allocate funding from your general fund or other creative source you should be able to come up with to supporting the community. Thank you.
Now, I'll call on Colleen, followed by Vanessa Taran.
Thank you for doing this meeting for all of us today. I'm Colleen Kelly. I'm a... I've lived here all my life. It's up to the citizens of the United States when the government is out of control. And deferring to my colleague's statement that if you guys don't take care of things and our politicians don't take care of things, when our federal government is running amok of the Constitution and not following the Constitution, not following due process, et cetera, et cetera, stuff could get out of hand. I would also like to support the funding. I also would like to support creative thinking, and I would also like folks to think back to the time of Martin Luther King and the Civil Rights Movement, where there was a lot of creative resistance, and I think it's also important for the white community to step up now. Thank you.
Okay, please don't clap. Okay, Vanessa Taran, followed by Sarah Bacon.
I don't know when to start, sorry. Good afternoon, mayor and council members. Vanessa Taran, Director of Polici, speaking on behalf of MYCOP and the 805 Immigrant Coalition. Today, we urge the city to support the 21 immigration legislative proposals to protect immigrant communities not only in this city but across California. We would like to highlight three key bills that we urgently request your support. AB 49, the California Safe Haven Schools and Childcare Act, which protects immigrant children from enforcement actions at schools and childcare centers. AB 1108, the Forensic Accountability Custodial Transparency and Safety Act. And AB 421, which prohibits law enforcement from sharing information with immigration authorities about enforcement activities occurring within one mile sensitive locations such as childcare facilities, places of worship, and medical centers. We respectfully ask the city of Santa Barbara to serve as a model of leadership and commitment to community safety by advancing the recommendations presented by the 805 Immigrant Coalition today. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Bacon. Thank you.
Hi, Council. Thank you for holding this special meeting today. My name is Sarah Bacon. I'm a longtime Santa Barbara resident, and I'm also the Vice President of External Affairs for UCSB's Graduate Student Association, representing thousands of students in local, state, and federal issues. ICE has been terrorizing our community. In the ACLU case, which the council voted to join, a federal judge issued a temporary restraining order against ICE for targeting people solely based on appearance, on language, on job type, and on location. This type of profiling, detention, and arrest without reasonable suspicion should alarm everyone, everyone in this room, regardless of race, status, or political ideology. It's absolutely terrifying, and it's traumatizing to families, volunteers, and everyone. At a time when many no longer feel safe from our federal government, we need our local government, our city, you, to stand visibly and tangibly with its people. As a person of conscience, I strongly urge you to issue the declaration and allocate substantial funds to support impacted families. And to Santa Barbara Police, your cars say dedicated to serve. Serve who? Show us that you're on the side of the community, your community too. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, Mr. Clerk, we have hands raised online. Yeah, the first speaker, please.
First speaker is going to be Juan Carlos Diaz, followed by Alondra Mendoza. Juan Carlos, please unmute yourself and go ahead and speak.
Muy buenos dias. ¿Se me escuchan?
Sí.
Buenos dias, alcalde y concejales. Mi nombre es Juan Carlos Diaz, abogado comunitario de MICOP y en representación de mi comunidad indígena, comunidad latina, y como miembro de la coalición de 805 migrantes. Estoy aquí para pedirles respetuosamente a la ciudad de Santa Barbara que nos escuche, pero más que eso que hagan algo. El pueblo está haciendo el llamado, el pueblo está exigiendo las respuestas. La redada del 10 de julio de 2025 en Glasshow, en Camarillo y Carpintería, ha dejado un gran impacto en nuestra comunidad. Madres, esposas, esposos, y abuelos fueron secuestrados. Lamentablemente también ellos eran proveedores de sus hogares, y en estos momentos las familias que quedaron atrás viven con miedo y no se sienten seguras. Así que por eso también les estamos pidiendo que protejan a nuestra comunidad y que pues sigan las... tomen acción sobre las cinco peticiones de nuestras comunidades que comparten hoy con ustedes en protección de los inmigrantes que viven y trabajan en las ciudades de Santa Barbara y sus alrededores. Es padres y los trabajadores que están trabajando dignamente y contribuyendo a la comunidad. No somos delincuentes, somos trabajadores que trabajamos duros en nuestra sociedad. Gracias.
Gracias. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is going to be Alondra Mendoza, followed by Frank Rodriguez. Alondra, go ahead and unmute yourself and speak.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Alondra Mendoza, a community advocate with MICOP, a member of the 805 Immigrant Coalition and as a member of the New Savvy Indigenous Community. Farm workers on the Central Coast are being targeted by harsh immigration policies, causing deep and lasting trauma. Parents of children with intellectual disabilities such as autism, Down Syndrome, epilepsy, and other disabilities are deeply concerned, not only about being separated from their children, but also their health and safety. They are aware that bringing their children with them would not be safe, as the children would lack access to essential health services and will not be able to plan for the future. Farm workers feed our communities daily. Their safety and well-being must matter to all of us. Given the attacks that our immigrant indigenous and farmworker communities are experiencing, we urge the City of Santa Barbara to take action on the five demands our community is presenting today to protect the immigrants who live and work in the city and surrounding areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker will be Frank Rodriguez, followed by Liliana Monriquez. Frank, if you can go ahead and unmute yourself and speak, please.
Good afternoon, Council members. Frank Rodriguez here. Definitely want to elevate the calls that are coming from the 805 Immigrant Coalition and the broader community and diverse community that's present with you all in City Hall. I definitely agree with allocating the $500,000 for immigrant services, especially deportation defense and informing our immigrant community. And especially think about for the future, how, when thinking about these budgets, how do we provide safety nets for the immigrant community? Let it be by providing the voice of City Hall to the state Sacramento for the policies that are coming from the state, but also how do we provide these safety nets and how are they included in our budget to fund efforts such as 805 UndocuFund and the Immigrant Legal Defense Center and MICOP that are providing these vital services for the community? And how do we make sure these safety nets are permanent for the long term? There's so many examples like Los Angeles and Long Beach that are doing this. Let's replicate it and make it happen here. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker will be Liliana Monriquez, followed by Chelsea Lancaster. Liliana, if you can unmute yourself and speak, please.
Yes, thank you. My name is Liliana Monriquez. I serve as a Program Manager for Proyecto Misteco, part of the Accesso Program, which works with indigenous families who have children with intellectual and developmental disabilities. One thing that I want to focus on is I echo a lot of what has been said today, and especially about allocating funds in regards to legal defense and emergency assistance for these families that have been impacted by ICE raids. The funding is not only necessary, it is a moral obligation. These raids are tearing apart households where undocumented parents and caretakers that were the sole providers, including family members who live with these ADDs. It is a primary... What is primary caregivers is detained and deported. If a child with autism loses their consistent emotional anchor, an adult with cerebral palsy may be left without access to critical medical equipment, and a family relying on someone to help navigate complex disability, systems cannot defend themselves. They are not only disability rights, but these are human rights issues. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker will be Chelsea Lancaster, followed by Lizzy Rodriguez. Chelsea, go ahead and unmute yourself and speak.
Hello, Council, Community. My name is Chelsea Lancaster, and I'm calling on behalf of a coalition of community resistors to remind the council that everything that Hitler did was legal, to remind the people who think they can choose neutrality in a time like this that you are only benefiting oppressors. As we celebrate quote-unquote "old Spanish days," the colonization of indigenous native people, the Chumash people, talk about celebrating the culture, you don't get the culture without the people. Our people are being racially profiled. They are being harassed. On October 1st, the big bad bill, whatever it's called, is going to hit, and the terror is just going to increase. You absolutely cannot tap into the housing fund because our immigrant community and our Latina community have already faced the double bind of now trafficking and displacement due to what has already been happening with housing in Santa Barbara. I want to quote Naomi Schulman as I finish up, that nice people made the best Nazis. My mom grew up next to them. They got along, refused to make waves, looked the other way when things got ugly and focused on happier things than politics.
Thank you.
They were lovely people who turned their heads as their neighbors were dragged away.
Thank you. Thank you. That's time. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is going to be Lizzy Rodriguez, followed by Thomas Becker. Lizzy, go ahead and unmute yourself and speak.
Good afternoon, Council members. Thank you for listening to Community Voices and scheduling this meeting today. Strong city infrastructure matters. Paved roads and fixing what's broken is important. But let's be clear, our most vital infrastructure are the people of our community. As we celebrate Fiesta, a tradition rooted in colonization, we have a chance to re-signify what this celebration means today. You have the power to honor those people who live here now, families struggling to find affordable housing, community members afraid to leave their homes, and a growing number of people experiencing homelessness. You have the opportunity to mark this time with courage and to create a Santa Barbara that works for our community members. I urge you to please honor 805 UndocuFund's request, protect housing and homeless services, and honor your investment in the Local Housing Trust Fund. Then you can truly celebrate a Fiesta comprised of today's values. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Final speaker will be Thomas Becker. Thomas, go ahead and unmute yourself and speak.
Yeah, thank you. I submitted written comments. Department of Homeland Security has $30 billion for enforcement operations. Carbalhall and others are under criminal investigation for their actions during the July 10th riot in Carpinteria. Committing battery with injuries upon a federal law enforcement officer is an offense that US DOJ will spare no expense to investigate and prosecute. It would be wise for you people to not help or associate with any person who was involved in the July 10th riot in Carpinteria. Thank you.
All right, very good. Further speakers? Mr. Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So with that, we're going to bring it back to council, and once again, you certainly may either combine comments and/or questions to the staff.
Mayor, I just want, for those who weren't able to make public comments or missed the cutoff time, I just wanted to remind everyone that they can submit a public comment to clerk at santabarbarca.gov.
Thank you.
And it'll get submitted to the council.
Thank you very much. All righty then. So we have three items on the staff recommendation, one of which is a directional, so we have two action items. So keep bearing that in mind. Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Ross. I'll start with comments. There really are not adequate words. The moment is now. The moment is past now. On a personal level, on a national level, I am sorry. Families are being separated. The aggressive detainment without due process is tearing apart our community. You know that, more than anybody knows that, and we cannot sit by and not respond and not respond aggressively. Our whole community, everything that we celebrate, we have Fiesta going on, we have Spanish colonial architecture, we talk so much about our historic preservation, and all that we're talking about is the last 100 years or 200 years and ignoring the thousands of years that indigenous peoples have been here. We are on borrowed land, no mistake about it. Stolen. We are on stolen land. We benefit, we profit. We're profiting right now with our celebrations while we pretend to honor a culture and not honor the people with protection every single day. I've been in this community a long time, not as long as many of you. Santa Barbara High School, over 50% Latino. Our whole community, over 50% Latino. I teach at Santa Barbara City College, a Hispanic-serving institution. If we can't acknowledge that it's over half of our community and much longer percentage-wise of history that belongs to you, and we are profiting without protection, and that has We talk about the economics. We've talked a lot about the economics. There have been nationally a lot of arguments about the economics. Well, who's going to pick our strawberries? Who's going to do the work that other people won't do? And we're taking the value of human life, and we're equating it to dollars for work that is subjugating people, has subjugated people, and taken advantage of people for hundreds of years. If we don't act, well, even if we do act, we're still part of that, because any actions we take cannot be enough and won't ever be enough. If this isn't the moment, and if we aren't the people to at least make a start, to at least make an acknowledgement, to put money behind what it is that we say that we stand for and celebrate, then I don't know who we are, and I don't know who we are acknowledging in our community, especially because we profit so heavily by our architecture and our festivals and our hospitality, all which is built on the backs of the immigrant community and always has been since the founding of this town as a tourist town. About Measure C. Yes, the promise on that ballot was for roads and police station and infrastructure. Police station, well underway and funded. Our roads are being paved far faster pace than we ever have done, and we can't even keep up with the paving that's happening. So people over pavement. If we can't do it now with the extra funds, we don't need to be racing to be paving our roads. And I think people who would have potholes on their streets, I would hope that you'd be considering, who is it who's doing that pavement work? Who is it who's building the police station? Who is it that is responsible for how you're getting those Measure C funds in the first place? Because that's on sales tax dollars. And if you don't think that's coming from the hospitality industry and the service industry and the farm workers and every other person who we're hoping to give a small amount back, not to support illegal activity, to support due process, to support families being torn apart. And there are detentions that are happening that are not just legal, that are not just with warrants that are being presented. I really, really want to thank our city administration and our city attorney's office and our public safety, our police, our firefighters. They are above and beyond stepping up in a quick response to town hall, to community outcry. It will never be enough, but I want to acknowledge the efforts that are being made at this time. And when we move forward and with the ACLU lawsuit, which we already voted to support, I want to be very clear for myself, we're not supporting, I'm not supporting funding illegal activity or obstruction of justice. It's because I believe in the rule of law and justice that I believe that all agencies need to be following it. To those who are carrying out raids, my ask is that you show your badge, show your face, show your documents, mark your cars, behave in the way that law enforcement behaves. Our law enforcement behaves in that way. We want to hold everyone to that standard. We can't keep profiting without protection. Our immigrant community provides the safety net for all of us. It's time for us to help provide the safety net back. I have to say to 805 UndocuFund, I've attended a training. It's very, very, very clearly they're saying, do not obstruct justice, do not stand in the way, do not do anything illegal, not in our name, don't do that on our behalf. You act legally. You act without obstruction, but honorably. And what 805 UndocuFund has done is the example for building community, loving support, standing for what you believe in, protecting community when community needs protection. I would be so honored to support the work of 805 UndocuFund financially, through patrols, through volunteering, through encouraging everybody I know to volunteer. You are building the community and acknowledging the community that needs to be right now, and I'm grateful. I support all the actions in the staff report and have come about from community. I support at least $500,000. And I think it's like sometimes with a family budget, sometimes you just don't know where that fund is going to come from, but you've got to buy those school lunch tickets, and you're going to figure it out. So I think we need to figure it out. I think there is a nexus for it to come from Measure C. I think there's a nexus for it to come from General Fund. There's not a nexus for it to come from our housing fund, because that's serving many of the same, in the same population, safety nets. We need to be supporting the safety nets. I'm very, very grateful to everybody who keeps showing up and keeps speaking out. We need you. We need your support in times to come. I'll leave my comments at that, but I support all these actions with the $500,000 at the least in acknowledging that it cannot be enough and that we're in this for the long haul. There will be more.
Ms. Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to everyone who came out again today to share with us. What Councilmember Sneddon said was so well put, so I'm not going to reiterate her points, though I agree with them fully. I'm going to do what I think I do best, honestly, which is to dig into how to figure it out. Because while I agree with you that it has to be done, we also have to have a mechanism for doing it. And I think that is why we are here today, and it's our responsibility to be very clear for our staff so that we can actually move forward with tangible action, and that's what's required of us today. So I say all that, I'm just going to dig into the policy side. First, I want to start by asking some questions around the declaration of emergency for our city attorney, if that's okay. So I think I generally agree with your, the legal analysis that was made there on preemption issues. But in the staff report, it says that we can't declare an emergency on the acts of another subdivision of the US government. But I'm wondering if we can declare a state of emergency on the effects of something. So this is maybe a subtle nuance, but it's one that I think is really critical to our ability to declare. And you'll see where I'm going with this after you answer that question.
I do, I do. Honorable Mayor, Councilwoman Harmon, there's two parts. The first part, I understand, is what is occurring, does the effects or the actions fit under a declaration of emergency? So that's part one. But there's a second part, because when you do enact a declaration of emergency, when you take that action, you declare the whole entire chapter. And when you're doing that, there is a subsection where there's a punishment of violation. So it has to have substance when you're declaring an emergency to that point in terms of, so it can fit. And that's why the issue of when it comes to the preemption issue, you can't enforce on federal government officers. That's the issue of confusion. So let me read this, for example. So there's a punishment of a misdemeanor, for example, to willfully obstruct, hinder, delay any member of the emergency services organization, which is generally city employees, in the enforcement of any lawful rule or regulation issued pursuant to this chapter. Chapter meaning the declaration of emergency. We have no ability to enforce that based on this issue. But we can do the proper forum for that is the two things that is before you today. One is the declaration in terms of support, because that fits, I think, what the policy objective is here. And the second thing, of course, is when you're having a conflict with, for example, the federal government in terms of how they're going about the enforcement, the violations of due process, racial profiling, that is in the courtroom. That is what this lawsuit does. The lawsuit before us and joining is for the Fourth and Fifth Amendment violations, looking at issues of how ICE is operating, how they are racial profiling, and the economic effects it also have on this community in terms of the fear that's causing the lack of participation because of that fear.
So I have a couple, I'm really, I'm going to try not to get in the weeds here, but I do think it's important that we tease this out for a couple of reasons. First, in this agenda report, it says it's MuniCode Chapter 9.166, but I can't find that. Is that the right reference?
It's, I believe it's 9.116, and then the section...
Okay, so that's a typo. Thank you. Just, thank you very much. So I will dig into that in a moment. But, so you're saying there has to be the capacity to enforce in order for a declaration. What are we enforcing on in the case of a natural disaster?
Well, it all depends on specifically if it's a national, whatever the natural disaster it could be. So in a case of fires, right, you can, whatever it's declaring in terms of locally jacking up prices for that reason and everything else, that would be a basis to do that, whatever obstruction it could be in terms of it. So emergency order during COVID, for example, right? If a business had, you know, if we passed a policy in terms of masking or all that, you'd be able to, or business to be shut down or operated, and they continue to be open, that would be an ability to enforce a misdemeanor on that using 9.116.
So there has to be a misdemeanor?
Well, there has to, if we're declaring an order, there has to be a mechanism to enforce the order. It has to have some...
Couldn't the mechanism, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I'm trying to get to a, I guess I want to get to yes, which is why I keep pushing this. But couldn't a mechanism for enforcement be the allocation of financial resources toward remediation or amelioration of mental health crises? I mean, couldn't that be an action under this framework?
That, Honorable Mayor, Councilwoman Harmon, that could be an action, but that action could be done via a resolution, not an emergency order.
So the reason I want to get to emergency order is if there's an emergency order, can't we access disaster reserves to fund that?
The council doesn't need to declare a disaster to access the emergency reserves. And so that's, it's a policy statement. So the council, the legal implications of declaring an actual disaster or an emergency, like, I think if you're trying to get to using the reserves, the easier way is just to amend the reserve policy and use the reserves.
So, okay, thank you. I thought we had to have some...
Through the mayor, Councilmember Harmon, I think you're thinking of perhaps a state or federal state of emergency, which we would need a declaration of emergency in order to access those funds. But I don't, to my knowledge, there aren't any state or federal funds. The state hasn't declared a state of emergency, nor obviously has the federal government, so.
So we are fully free to, when we allocate money today, to direct that they come from disaster reserves?
You would have to direct us to change the reserve policy first. And we can't appropriate funds today. You can direct us to bring it back because this is a special meeting, and under the charter, we cannot appropriate funds at a special meeting. It has to, so what we're asking for today is direction on if you want to appropriate funds, where it would come from so we can craft a resolution to bring back at the next, you know, probably be the meeting of the 12th.
Okay, so I still think, I will leave this alone. Thank you all. I really appreciate that. I will leave this for now, and perhaps we can dig into it separately offline because I think there might be some nuance here that's important for us to understand. I would say as to the resolution, I certainly support a statement, whatever that looks like. If we go the resolution direction, personally, I think there are opportunities in this language to make a stronger statement. And so I would like to see that, and perhaps that's something we can all collectively work on before it comes back on the 12th. So I would put that out there. Let me go back to my notes. Thank you. Okay. As to the monetary allocation, I am very cognizant of the urgency of the allocation of this money. And one of the concerns, and part of why I took us through that exercise just now, was I would like to get to the fastest path to allocation and understanding and recognizing that to tell our staff to just go figure it out, and that is not going to make this move quickly. And it's an unfair burden to put on all of you to make those choices. I am sitting up here with the obligation to make the difficult choices and to come up with solutions. So I feel very strongly that it's in everyone's interest for us to do that today. Recognizing that, here is what I would propose, and I'm interested for everyone's feedback on this. Personally, I would like to see this money come from the reserves. I think that that is a longer road for us to take to get this money out the door. And there are going to be a lot of conversations around amending that policy. It is not a one-stop shop. So what I propose is that we consider, and hear me out, I know there's a lot of allies in this room that are not going to like this idea, but I hope that you will trust me with where I'm going. We allocate, in the first instance, the $500,000 from the flexible housing fund with the direction that it go to the finance committee for the purposes of doing that deep dive to specifically identify where that $500,000 will come from to be returned to the fund. To me, look, I realize that is a trust exercise, and I'm looking at the two folks particularly, but I don't see a path forward to getting the money out the door as quickly as possible without going this direction. And I think this is a way for us to, on the 12th, make that allocation while maintaining our commitment to housing. I do see it as two sides of the same coin. You can't, it's not an appropriate place to take. But it is a longer, more substantive conversation. Like, our finance director is not even here, and he's on a well-earned vacation. But this is going to require some real focused attention that will take time, which means delay getting the dollars out the door. So that is, that's the best proposal I can come up with for today to make this move quickly with the commitment and requirement that finance committee do that work to come back and let us know the finance committee's recommendation of where that $500,000, excuse me, will be coming from and to return it to the housing fund. The final matter that I want to raise today, I think is, I think is appropriate to raise today, though I imagine I will be stopped if it's not. I am really interested in our city's policies on behalf of our employees as well. It is of critical importance to me that we support, and I understand we cannot direct our employees to take actions that would, at least in some senses or by certain people, appear to be contravening federal law. I respect that. But I also think that it's incumbent on us as an institution to put in place policies that support our employees as they take action and find themselves upholding the Constitution out in our community. So to the extent that we can put in place, I'm thinking of a commitment to non, no disciplinary action if an employee finds him or herself or themselves, rather, in the crosshairs as a result of asking for a warrant.
Ms. Harmon, I interrupt just for a moment. I think I'd like to have my city attorney weigh in and make sure we're not getting off track here.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. So I'd also like to have Mr. Dymas weigh in on this, since he does the employment-related issues. But my concern, besides the supremacy clause issues, but my concern with direction to employees and how we initiate any kind of a, an action or not, is that it would then be a subject for our bargaining units because it affects their terms of employment. Mr. Dymas can maybe speak further on that and whether or not he thinks that would be a negotiating issue.
Mr. Dymas.
I'll just first let Councilwoman Harmon finish what she was going to say.
No, I think you understand the general direction I'm going. I mean, we do have general guidance on behavior at the city writ large, sort of bigger than the bargaining unit. So that's the level at which I'm sort of contemplating this direction.
So for perhaps something to be added to the employee handbook is maybe what you're thinking of?
Exactly.
Sure. Honorable Mayor, Councilwoman Harmon, to answer your question on that, and you're talking about an employee, just so I can be clear, getting arrested or somehow getting in trouble through...
Yeah, I can think of, let's think of an easy example. Arrested for asking for a warrant and then unable to make a shift and subject to discipline because they were late or they missed a shift. I mean, that's just a very simple sort of easy...
Thank you. I can answer that in two points. First, we, a couple of years ago, we passed an ordinance on job abandonment. And with that, if someone's not able to contact, it's considered abandoned. But it has a lot of provisions in there. If they're able to make a phone call or show such situations, there's discretion in how it's applied. So in that kind of situation, that ordinance is already in place, it can take in consideration to protect the employee. Also, if employees were to get in trouble, you know, we look at it a case-by-case basis as well. So we look to it, is there a nexus to the job? Like, if they're doing something like that, is there a nexus to a job versus like a DOT driver with a DUI? That's a totally different situation. So we do look at, you know, those two things. We do have a job abandonment ordinance in place that kind of addresses the situation if an employee is missing time or shifts and all that, where it's considered excused and they don't lose their job. It's not considered abandoned. And of course, if there are outside activities outside their scope and duties of employment where something were to happen, you know, we take a look in terms of the nexus and everything else on that. So it's not a hard and fast rule to create, and one kind of actually creates more unattended consequences versus allowing the flexibility that's in place now.
Okay, I hear you, and I don't need to push it any further. I just, I think that that is a concern from employees here at the city, justifiably. You know, our employees love, love this city, love working for this city, love the community, and they want to be able to show up for both. And I want us to do everything we can. I'm hearing from you that you are and you will and you will continue to.
And I will say, in the messages that I have sent to the organization around these topics, you know, we've expressed that employees are free in their personal lives to support these activities as they feel appropriate. You know, obviously, they can't do that in their course of their city employment, but we have indicated that that is something that they can do in their personal lives. And so I just, you know, making sure, you know, I think from my perspective, you know, if someone ended up in a situation like that, we would obviously look at that very differently than, you know, pure job abandonment.
Thank you. Well, I think I'll leave it there from now and listen to the rest of our colleagues.
Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first, I appreciate my colleagues' thoughts, the words from Councilmember Sneddon. And also, I really appreciate Councilmember Harmon getting into how we need to go about this because we do have a job up here that's very difficult. We can't just come up with money and out there. So I do, I do want to add, you know, I have just as strong concerns as everybody and the outrage that everyone has on how our immigrant community, not just our immigrant, but our Latino and community is being treated in terms of whether or not you're a citizen, you could be pulled over, and all the implications that goes with that and everything else is going on. As most of you know, my family is a mixed-race family. My parents are immigrants from Vietnam. And one of my nephews is Mexican-American, Vietnamese-American, and he is a veteran of Afghanistan. And he was in Kabul when nearly a dozen soldiers were killed. He was there. And the fact that he is home now and he could get pulled over just because of the way he looks, and he's a veteran that served our country, that's not right. And that's what everyone's talking about, when we're talking about indiscriminately pulling people over because of the way they look. And it puts all of us at the local level, where the rubber meets the road, because you can't go to Washington DC, so you come here. And we are in a terrible situation, the seven of us, we signed up for it, so don't feel bad for us, to try to make sense of this and try to act when the ability to do so is very limited and there are a lot of fine lines we need to walk so we don't make the situation worse in terms of what the federal government could do to us, and by us, I mean the community. Now, with that being said, so I just want to, I understand, and my family has personal, and it's not just about me, it's about every family. Now, to get to how do we pay for any of this, so I, Councilmember Harmon and I are on similar, came to similar ways, but I want to take it a little further than that. I want to start with Measure C. Well, first, I want to back up to the budget. As everyone remembers, I wasn't there for my medical emergency. I had very limited time to prepare for the budget. And at that time, in the limited time I had, I saw, we're talking with the finance director, studying the budget, that the challenges that we're having and the deficit were coming. I didn't know they were going to be this much, but I knew they were more than what was presented when we voted. And I knew they were going to be, and I think most of us knew that, but we didn't know what the number was. It's why I tried at the time to propose the compromise that said, hey, let's hold off because we also don't know what the federal government is going to do, and we need to have as much flexibility. The other thing is, no matter what the number is, I'm going to leave it up to my colleagues to put the number out there. Based on comments today and knowing my colleagues and knowing that there's about three and a half years left, that no matter what the numbers say, it's $500,000, that's not going to last three and a half years, and the council will be back up here with pressure from the community, and we're going to have this discussion again and again and again. That should concern everybody, especially if we make a decision today to go into Measure C, and here's why. Measure C was never intended to be the city's reserve funds. We have a policy for reserve funds for contingency and for disasters. If we go into Measure C, the first time we do it, if we do this, it fundamentally changes Measure C. And I could foresee that there would be some in the community that might put something on the ballot to change it because it goes contrary to what the original intent was. And some of the Measure C, one of the Measure C Oversight Committee members mentioned that today. If we did $500,000 for Measure C today, I have... If we did 500,000 for Measure C today, I have absolutely no doubt, I don't know when, but maybe later this year or next year, we'd come back, and that's where we would go again and again and again. And that is the easy way out for us as the council. That is the easiest thing, because it doesn't address it, and then it, it allows us not to take the necessary steps to addressing our structural deficit that we have, and it, it just allows us the easy way out. I, I do want to, if you could pull up, I think a slide, whatever the slide is that has the budget numbers on there. I just want everybody to understand, because this is what we're facing, and it's why I support with Councilmember Harmon, Slide seven.
Sure. Sorry. I have a communication.
So based on Mr. Frederick's comments, we could, I think we could take out the one, the 1 million from the, the CDBG. But look at those numbers. If you go back to the fiscal year '26, the deficit was about three and a half of what we thought. If you add in the reserves, it's eight, or it's a little bit less, I take out the million. So look going forward, those numbers are not, they're cumulative, so every year, that's an additional. So let's take the bottom line of fiscal year '26, 8 million. That's 8 million the year we're in right now. We have to find a way to come up with that, or we're going to have to start cutting essential services that you all rely on. Next year, it's 10. So it's not 2 million more, it's an additional 10 million. That's $18 million we have to come up with in two years. The next year, 13, 16. That's all going into our reserve policies. So if we were to fund this at a Measure C, we wouldn't have the, we need to put the pressure on ourselves not to fund it from Measure C and put the pressure on ourselves to deal with that now, because I got to tell you, I don't want to close the East Side Library six months from now. I don't want to close a downtown library six months from now. I don't want to start putting up new hours at our city parks at a time when we need them more than ever. But if we don't address those numbers on the bottom, that is what will happen. And that's why what Councilmember Harmon said is exactly correct, is we need to send not only the 500,000, I think that's what's going to be proposed, out of the funds and find a way to replenish it into the housing, because housing is the priority. We need to find a way, that housing funds was predicated on reserves. If you go back to the budget, it was predicated on using reserves with a plan to replenish them. So we need to, in addition to this, whatever comes out of this discussion today, the 500,000, let's call it that, we need to figure out a way to replenish the reserves for the housing, for the Housing Trust Fund. And in addition, we need to figure out how to address those numbers. So again, we're not cutting down the essential services that everybody needs. And if we wait until January, February is part of this, of the process, it's too late. And so I would say that the direction would be, I'd like to add to what Councilmember Harmon said, is send to the finance to include the 500,000 today, that I, again, I feel is going to be proposed, the, the 5 million that was proposed for the local Housing Trust Fund and the deficit, and have it come to finance for the initial discussion in, in October, so we can begin those discussions prepping for the budgets for the next year. It's a responsible thing to do. It's a lot of pressure. Myself, Councilmember Harmon, Councilmember Santamaria are going to bear the burden of that pressure, but that's why we're here. I'm fine with that. But again, we cannot take it from Measure C. The other thing is, GALIDA made difficult choices from their allocation, and I just want everybody to remember this, and they took it from their childcare fund. And one council member in particular, I'm not going to name names, but is an advocate like no other for childcare services. And that, I haven't talked to that council member, must have been a very painful vote, but GALIDA did it by really putting the pressure on themselves, and they didn't take the easy way out to come up with that money, and we cannot do that either. The last thing I will say is, as part of the recommendations for today, is Ms. McAdoo is, in regards to legislative platform, I'm fine updating it, but today, can we take the position to support the Bipartisan Dignity Act for Immigration Reform that is currently in the US Congress, that our Congressman Carbohall has co-sponsored? And the last time I checked, it's nearly 40 members of Congress, and I think the way it's working is one Democrat, one Republican, don't quote me on that, but I think it's pretty close to that. If we can take action today, rather than waiting for it to go to the Ledge Committee to update our platform, but to support that act, send a letter to our Congressman that the city of Santa Barbara stands in support of the Dignity Act, and CC every other cosponsor of that legislation, and send it to President Trump as well. I think it's important for him to hear from something constructive that we are, are doing that has bipartisan support in our, in our Congress. And so I'll conclude, conclude with this. I'm not making light of the situation, but there is something, it's a, I'm not going to reference a quote, but it's a quote that I came across a long time ago, and it doesn't matter where it came from, but it's not my own, but it changed, it changed the way I think about life in general, and in light of what happened to me as well, where I view every, every day, even a day today that's very stressful, I view it as a bonus day in my life. Every day I wake up, it's a bonus day. But the quote is the following, "The price of hating other human beings is loving yourself less." And for me, every moment, no matter what it is, when you spend a moment hating another person, that is a wasted time of your life that you'll never get back, and hate gets more hate and more hate. And I'm going to say, for those who have, who are hating on immigrants, but also those who are hating on, on our president, find it within yourself to focus on the policies and not the person. And it's very hard to do, but the reason I say that is because we need to be strategic on these issues, and if we, if we allow hatred to come into us, we lose focus of what the issues are and how we can just focus on them and make real change. So I just want to say, I hope we can support, I was about to say President Carbohall, but uh, but Congressman Carbohall and his efforts to get bipartisan support. So, and I hope our, we can also get the, the Finance Committee to look at all those issues on a deep dive. Thank you.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for showing up and speaking. I know for a lot of you, it's, it's very, very scary to speak out in public, so I really respect and appreciate that.
Speaker, please.
That's what I'm saying. Be loud and proud, brother. Ultimately, ultimately, for me, hold on, man, come on, you're going to start talking when the Latino starts to talk?
This is a, this is a business meeting, and this is not a, this, we've, you've had your say, it's our turn now. Please stay.
So getting to my point is, obviously, we all agree that this is a human right issue, but most people unfortunately don't react until it affects their wallet. So with that being said, this, to me, is an economic crisis? Why can't we state this as an economic state of emergency? And with that, can't we implement something to protect, at the very least, our businesses from losing their employees or half their workforce? Because as my colleagues have stated, half the population fits the demographic that's being targeted here, so therefore, half the businesses, in theories, employees are that demographic. So I'm fearful that this administration and what they're implementing is going to drastically affect our economy to the point of a crisis. Can we do anything now that we can state to protect those businesses and protect those employees from that? I mean, we did it during COVID, right? We let the businesses operate in the streets, we did other things.
I mean, I think, Councilmember Gutierrez, that's something we can explore. I mean, I just, the, we'd have to look at what that would look like. I mean, again, I don't know if you're suggesting financial support for the business. I mean, again, that just continues to add, and if we are facing an economic downturn, that is going to impact the city's revenues, which gives us even less, less resources to, to address some of these concerns. So, you know, we've already been in conversations with Visit Santa Barbara, the Chamber, they've been helping us gather data for the lawsuit in terms of economic impact of these activities. Continue, you know, we can continue to work with them. Again, that's why I was suggesting the continued meeting with the Coalition. I understand during COVID that there was a, a group that was meeting regularly to kind of talk about impacts, and we're happy to continue those conversations. But if there's specific things that you would like us to look at, it'd be helpful to understand what those are.
Find any sources for your.
Well, any type of protection for the businesses and the employees of those businesses that we as a city can provide, I'd like for city staff to explore that, because otherwise, yeah, we're not going to be generating the funding that is going to be funding the city that keeps all these services going, and then we're going to be in a lot of trouble.
Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to express my appreciation for those of you who were able to make a 11:30 meeting on a Thursday today to share your perspective. It is, whether obviously or not, not a perspective I get to hear often in my day-to-day life. And I appreciate kind of the nexus to an economic perspective. I don't, I don't really think so. It's really a, a human crisis, not a economic crisis. Ashley Farrow wandered out. She and I run into each other out in the real world sometimes, and she always impresses me, but her, but her quote was probably the one that slapped me the most, and that's like, people are being hunted like prey. And the way they look is literally urban camouflage to be able to do that. You know, you might as well be out with a bow and arrow, wearing face paint and fatigues in looking for a buck to knock down. It's, it's just is, it's worse than that. That's sobering enough for me, but it's worse than that. So many of the comments made, both by the public and what you've heard up, heard up here already, I, 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 are engaging to me, and I share some not. I do, I think it's not mentioned enough, and I just have a short list here, of stuff that we've done up till now already, and I don't think we get enough credit for it. It's my perspective sitting in the sandbox, I'm not outside the sandbox, so, but we join the legal process. We've got a list of stuff in the resolution that we've already requested from Department of whoever. We're coordinating with our regional, other government entities. We've reasserted our stance to uphold the California Values Act in our daily procedures and operations. And what at one, what at one time, just a couple of weeks ago, was most important to me, we've publicly stated and we're procedurally ready and able to ensure that federal agents are actually federal agents. That has been, just from the terms of watching this on television, the most disheartening part of it for me is not even knowing who's who and who just went to Walmart and, Walmart and bought a vest that day and is out there pretending to be a Proud Boy and acting on behalf of the federal government, because it's clearly not clear. And then, I always appreciate the lawyer in the group. Thank you. So I think that sounds good to me. The work, the miserable work will still come after that. My, you know, it's a little ironic that collectively, we're already moving out of contingency reserves and into disaster reserves in, in our current state. So I get why you needed to start working on the legal team on how do we get to disaster reserves, because soon we don't have contingency reserves anymore. That's, that's the situation we're in right now. And, you know, each of us, in our own way, has been responsible for that or not responsible for that. Some of the people sitting in the audience have been responsible for this, and we continue to watch the numbers on those charts continually get bigger and bigger in the, in the red digits. So my goal is to do what we need to do, but do it budget-neutral, recognizing that budget-neutral is already a humongous deficit that we see no escape from soon or currently. But my goal is not to make it worse. The, the discussing an argument can come about, where is the money going to slide horizontally from? Where is it going to, where is it going to move over? In Councilmember Sneddon's words, how do we figure it out? And we don't figure it out by making those numbers bigger, I don't think, in my opinion. We figure it out by addressing priorities in the budget that aren't the same priority as this and using those. And what truly is, in my five and a half years, the only single time that this, that we actually have a contingency reserve item. You know, it's one time, as you can see for now, as far as you can see in the future, and it's a clear and pressing need. We typically build our, our forays into, into reserves collectively with their, with the agreement of a majority that don't meet those guidelines, and this clearly does. And it's unfortunate and ironic and not good practice that we're in this situation with the numbers we are now, when we actually have a contingency need to use reserves. So I, I wouldn't have a problem with that number. I wouldn't have a problem sliding it onto the Finance Committee to figure out where you're going to move dollars sideways on the approved budget and current state of reserves to get to that number. What's been missing so far is who we're going to give it to, or how, who, what group of people we're going to give it to. We have historical partners that we've used in the past that are vetted with the city, have structure, have staff. I'm concerned that we open ourselves to exposure on using other than that. I'd love to be invited to 805 DocuFund training to see what that's like. I've only seen one example of that on television in Carpinteria, what it's like locally, because I haven't witnessed anything else out in the streets, and I was not impressed with the phrase that was used is, protection is not interfering, because I saw interfering on the television, and that's not what I want to be part of as the city supportive of this. I want to be part of legal help, stopping people that shouldn't be out there acting like they're enforcement people, people stopping from detaining people for reasons that are illegal, and for those that, what we call legal detention today or legal deportation, helping remedy that with the people that are left behind. I would have loved to have seen the Housing Authority stand up today and say, we're going to forgive rents for people in that situation until they can get out of that situation. I would love to see Clue walk in here with a check today to help with that also. These are, these are both things that we heard when we set it up. We will participate, and I'm, I'm looking, going to publicly put the pressure right back on you to say, okay, we're still doing it, and we're waiting for people to participate with us. So that, I think, is something we haven't talked about here today on if the 500,000 is acceptable as a moving number, and send it to Finance Committee to figure out where that's going to come from, is then, the, the reasoning behind that is it moves forward immediately and quickly, but where is it moving to? And I think we still need to figure that out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do you need to take back your racist statement? No, both are.
All right. I know, Ms. Sneddon, you wanted to speak. I wanted to make a couple of comments here.
Oh, I can wait.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think what, and anybody that read, I don't know if they read Independent or NewsHawk, I wrote an op-ed a while back about this and how disgusted I was about the activity under call of authority of profiling, how wrong it was, and how, that's not who our cops are. One of my biggest fears is sliding down that path where police work in general got vilified, and when you get to know the people that wear the Santa Barbara uniform, you know that's an entirely false narrative, or people, our people are community policing. They, they, they wrote the book. And so what I don't want to do is get into a point where we start denigrating all authority based on the abuse of the one authority coming from the national area. Now, as Mr. Nunn has pointed out, this, we're not talking about whether or not to, to go against what is the law, but it's the way it's applied, the manner which is implied, and it's meant to intimidate and meant to cower people into potentially, you know, self deporting or whatever that is. It's just a, it's an abuse of what we've funded as taxpayers going forward. Now, with that being said, it's also important to husband or to, to, to shepherd the funding that we get from taxpayers to do the things we need to do. We can't just toss it around. We need to fund our public safety people. We need to keep funding, as Mr. Freeman pointed out, our libraries. And we're dangerously close of being unable to do that. So we can't just invent money out of anywhere and, and, and give it away. We've got, we got hung up on a $500,000 number. I realize it was an ask. I'm not sure where it comes from. Normally when we do a grant, bought grant funding, they have to apply and we have to know where the money is going to go. And so to have a number just thrown out there as a whole number isn't a very comfortable way for me to talk about allocating any funds. And I certainly couldn't justify allocating funds that have not already been appropriated because we overappropriated in this last budget cycle, and that's why three of us voted against our own budget. We were brought a balanced budget by our city administrator and it got blown up. And so three of us had to vote against it. Never seen that here before, certainly not a mayor voting against his own budget. So that wasn't a very comfortable thing to do. When we, when we go forward, we have to be aware of everything that taxpayers want. When you do philanthropy and you donate money to these different organizations, which, which I also listed in our, and the chief has listened as well in the bottom of my article about the different organizations that fund this stuff, you're choosing to do that. When you pay your taxes, you don't choose to pay your taxes, you pay them. And then you count on us to do what you said we were going to do with them. We've asked for two sales taxes within the last seven years. Not a very comfortable thing to have to do. One was to solve our infrastructure problem, and the measure C so far has done exactly what people intended it to do. Now, it's committed and overcommitted based on what's going on with inflation and, thank you, Mr. President, tariffs that are causing us to do this. But we've done the work that we were supposed to do with it. Measure I going forward was supposed to get us into the operational black so that we wouldn't have to go out and start cutting things again. We, there was a couple of my colleagues up here said, isn't it great to work with a budget where we don't have to make cuts? And then at the end, we blew it up and dipped into reserves. In my career on the city, up here on the dais, we've gone to the reserves three times. We've worked really hard to build them back. It's not a great thing to do because the services we provide with the taxpayer dollars that we collect involve the exact same people we're talking about today. I was an employer for most of my adult life, and it wasn't ICE back then, it was INS. Same thing, they'd roll in, people would panic. I had documents from everyone, but some of those documents were maybe, whatever it was, it was intimidating. They didn't do the stormtrooper activity they're doing right now. This is, this is over the top. But it's something we suffered through all these years because neither political party ever had the courage, the guts, or the wherewithal to make a cogent immigration policy. Something where you have probably 16 million people in this country are either undocumented or don't have proper documents or are waiting for their documents to come through. I know I helped a few of them myself. I helped a few people all the way through citizenship, and it was hard and it was long and it was expensive. Those things need to happen. What can we do about it here on city councils relatively limited? We've had to say it over and over again. And what I don't want to do is have anybody walk out of here with the impression that we are the answer. We can try to help. We can support the members of our community. And big part of the Fabregas committee are people that perhaps are undocumented, and I don't know who they are. You may not speak right now, thank you. No, you don't have, it's not your turn, it's my turn. You had your turn. In any case, what we have to, sir, if you, if you need to leave, you need to leave, sir, but it's, it's my turn, all right?
Can I have a turn after you?
No, no, you're done with public speaking. Please be quiet.
Well, you speak, but I have a question on what you say.
I'm going to adjourn, we're going to adjourn the meeting right now if I can't have a word in the chamber. Please respect that. Anyway, going forward is the things that have gone on today are what I don't want to say. I don't want to overpromise, and I do not want to overdrain the funds the community depends upon to run Eastside Library, to run after school programs, to do the things that everybody in this community needs. So we have to be careful about this. Ms. Harmon came up with a relatively creative solution. Once again, I don't know what the number is. I'm not sure why that number is a number that's out there. But it's got to be something that's been pre-appropriated because there's nothing else, there's, there's no more water in the well. The bucket's hit and the rock is the bottom right now. So we have to be careful about that as a, as a council, and we have to do what the taxpayers assigned us to do. With that, we'll go to Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I think these are all really important suggestions about the long term and where it should come from. And I think Finance Committee is the place to look at it. I'd like to suggest, I mean, the measure C has $35 million in it. And if you look at the list of things that are funded, it's very important, infrastructure. 500,000 of 35 million is like a little over 1%. And I think as we're moving into the future with measure C, and you're right, that the promise was for the police station and for paving and physical infrastructure. But it was we're moving out of that and into the police station being built, which is happening. We've kept that promise. There will eventually be funds, and, and I would be supportive of changing our measure C policy because it should have had a sunset or it should have had a longer range view of what would happen to it once that police station is built. That was the promise. It's something that's going to be physically built. And I think that, you know, we can't do it today, but I think we could have a, a policy where 2% of measure C goes to human infrastructure, goes to supporting those who support building all that infrastructure. There's, you know, just looking at this list right now, there's, there's $6 million in overlays. Overlays are important, you know, I, I love pavement. Overlays are important. $6 million, I think, could, you know, could maybe stand to share 500,000. So I don't mean to suggest like, I don't know where the money could come from. I have a lot of suggestions of where the money could come from. And I think a longer range plan will take into account that this isn't just a one time. There will be the continued, especially over the next few years, the continued need for those resources. So we can change the reserve policy. We could change our measure C recommendations, a very small amount, I'm talking about 1.5%. Very, very small amount towards human infrastructure. Measure I, I mean, measure I and measure C are both based on sales tax revenue. We do not have sales tax revenue if we don't have workers, if we don't have people feeling safe moving about in the community shopping, if we don't have people contributing because they feel protected and safe. So I, I think there's a nexus for either of those sales taxes, measure I, measure C. I, I, I would support however we could get to the 500,000 as quickly as we could. I, I think, as, as was suggested, the 805 on DocuFund or legal services for immigration, but for those, those social safety nets supporting families and people. So I think it could go to finance and finance could make those recommendations. But I just want to put out there that we've had the comment a couple of times that, oh, they're going after measure C again. Oh, they're going to keep going after measure C. And that's yes, because measure C has served its purpose, has been serving its purpose, and it doesn't all need to still be going to that purpose. And so I think we could, I think if we're going to talk about changing policies, I think we should equally also consider long range. Measure C could support human infrastructure, community, human infrastructure.
Ms. Shannon Maria.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. All right, I got a few points here. So as far as measure C goes, I understand, you know, it was never intended to be a reserves fund. I've heard the comment that once we take from it, you know, we'll, we'll be back here in a few months or next year asking for more from it. And we need to understand that that is the exact same case for our flexible housing fund and the local housing trust fund. Those housing funds are not meant to be flexible funds for anything other than housing and homelessness services. That is what it was designated for. We had this, this conversation before. There was a lot of you who are in this room and many who aren't, who fought very hard for that money. And I think it's honestly, it's the easy way out to target that, those funds because quite honestly, we, the decision we are going to have to make is going to be a difficult one, and that would be the easy way out. So I, I would not be supporting taking money from any of the housing funds. As far as measure C goes, I, I do also share the concern of not fulfilling the promise to the voters. That being said, I, I agree with Councilmember Sneddon in, 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 you know, changing the direction for measure C funds to include human infrastructure could be a way to go forward. In my, it's my understanding also, well, I'll go, I'll go back to the, the funds. But I wanted to ask our, our staff a really quick question because it's my understanding of the municipal code, it lists civil unrest as a precondition for declaring a state of emergency. Is that correct?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Shannon Maria, correct. It does list civil unrest.
Okay. I, I'm seeing what's happening out in the community and the comment made earlier. I forgot who made the comment earlier, but somebody said, you know, if, if as a city, you know, as elected officials, it is our job to maintain the peace and do what is necessary in case civil unrest occurs. And I, I'm already seeing it start to happen, and it, it feels like that is something worth exploring because it's only going to get worse from here. And if you, you as in just metaphorically you, but if anybody out there expects our community to just take this attack line down, like that's, that's not what's going to happen. The community is going to do something. The, the community can only take so much before they try, they start to defend themselves. And we're going to be back here dealing with a much worse civil unrest and, and having to, to figure out, okay, well, what do we do now? And what I don't want to do is end up in a situation like in Los Angeles where civil unrest occurs, and what we do is we send our police officers in. Because I don't think our police officers are, are in the adequate position to be interfering or dealing with anything ICE related. Obviously, they don't have the jurisdiction over federal agents, of course they don't, supremacy clause, we understand that. And it, it would literally be suicide to ask our police officers to go face off with ICE agents. Nobody here is asking that, and we can't do that. But that being said, is, we need to be careful to maintain the peace within our community and making sure that we have funding for rent, for, for food, for clothing. That is not obstructing justice. It is not an obstruction to keep people housed, fed, or clothed. And I want to make sure that we all acknowledge that nobody here is asking to allocate funding to circumvent ICE activity, that that's not, that's not what we're doing here. We're literally just trying to respond to the crisis. There are literally children being left unattended because their parents got picked up. And now whether that parent got picked up due to a traffic ticket or they got picked up for a serious crime, it is still children being left alone. So, and then that is what we're dealing with. As Councilmember Harmon said earlier, it's not necessarily a, a, a response to the action of the federal government, but the impact that it's having on our community. Going back to the funding now, as far as the funding goes, long term, we do need to think about or talk about, yes, amending the reserve policy. But we're also going to have to talk about, you know, we're going to have to add something like a vacancy tax on the ballot. We're going to have to do something. Commercial, residential vacancy tax, anybody? Because we have a lot of families that need to be housed, and we need to make sure that we have more funding coming into the city. You're seeing from our staff that we are going into the red. And so, yeah, we're going to have to think long term about how to raise those revenues. But right now, those children and those families impacted cannot wait for a ballot measure. So that is a conversation for the long term. The final thing I'll say is, I'll, I'll throw another funding suggestion into the mix since we're all making our suggestions. But when we talked about measure I, there was a conversation about our, about using measure I funds for existing non-on-one public safety services. And we had three officer positions that were frozen during COVID due to economic uncertainty. That is what we heard. They were now unfrozen this year despite the fact that we are in economic uncertainty. And I, I did the math, I just pulled out my calculator. It's about $555,000 per year on unfreezing and hiring three additional officers, which we had frozen for the last four or five years since COVID because of the state of our budget. And if those positions have not been filled yet, I think it would be worth exploring reallocating that funding that was originally to unfreeze those positions and direct it to community safety. Because at the end of the day, safety is a holistic, safety, practicing safety has to take a holistic approach. And we may not be able, our officers are not, we would never ask them go face off with ICE agents. That, that's, that would be completely inappropriate, and we're not asking them to do that. We want to maintain existing services, and I would never want to cut any existing staff. But if these are positions that have not been filled yet, I think it's worth exploring. That is about the amount of money that we're looking for either way and continuing to add more to our police forces, not really addressing the, the issue at hand. And I know that it's been a big request from the community of having our police intervene, but we just can't have them do that. We, we just can't. And so I think it's, it's important that we consider, the difficult decisions to be made are, we need to think about this long term. And if you start taking money from the housing fund now, we only allocated 1.5 million to the flexible fund. We're here two more times, that's going to be empty. So the housing fund is not the way to go. And measure C would be my second choice. I, I think if the majority of us are in support of reallocating from measure C, amending that direction and include human infrastructure, we can do that. But also I think we, we need to have the long term conversation of how to replenish reserve funds and, and get our, our budget on track. But I wanted to ask our staff before I end here, what, what it's looking like for our police department in hiring in those now three unfrozen positions? Have we hired people yet? Because if we have, then I'm not, I don't want to, I'm not thinking about laying anybody off by any means. But I want to know just like, where is the status on that?
Chief?
So Mayor, council members, those three positions still remain frozen. We have not had the authority, based on the budget that you passed, to actually hire for those positions. In terms of our hiring, we're actually doing a lot of hiring. We currently have 11 recruits in, in three different academies. So I do want to separate the fact that although there is this issue, as a chief, I'm going to tell you, there's a lot of other public safety issues. And I'm going to strongly advocate that those not, those positions don't become the funding because we have bike enforcement, we have traffic enforcement, we have regular, everyday public safety that we are trying to get back to being able to provide the quality of service that we really need in this community. This isn't adding to our, so we have 142 positions. This isn't adding three new positions on top of that. These are currently what is supposed to be our staffing. When you cut those positions, it takes us two years to hire for a new position because we have to hire, we have to send them to the academy, we have to train them. So if we don't have the authority to start recruiting for those positions, we set ourselves even further back in the hiring process. So I just want to put that out there. To me, as the chief, these are vital positions that at some point we need the permission to hire for. And I understand the, the want and the need to be able to fund what the council desires to fund today. But I would really request that it not be done on the backs of the men and women who are in fact here serving this community every day and providing those public safety needs and the things that we really need to be addressing in this community in terms of public safety.
Thank you, Chief. That's really important, and I, I don't take that comment lightly at all. I want to make sure that I'm very clear. We do not want to put this on the backs of our existing men and women and individuals who are serving on our police force, quite the opposite. I know we have allocated funding, we have not authorized to hire quite yet, but can you speak to?
Funding is not allocated.
Actually, the, the funding is not allocated. So there's no mu, there's no dollars affiliated with those three positions. So in order to keep the budget balanced, we did not appropriate dollars for those three positions. They're still technically frozen. What we indicated was if the chief got close to a point where she could fill those positions, we would come back and ask the council to appropriate the dollars. So there's no money there to use for this purpose.
And that's also because Measure I revenues still haven't fully came in, right? Or, because we're also waiting-
Well, we were also just trying to balance the budget. So, and so if we would have had to come back with trade-offs and choices to fill those positions.
Right. That's, okay, thank you, that's, that's useful. So, so these are our options, right? And I don't, I mean, none of the options presented before us are ideal for everybody in the room, but as the council and mayor up here, we are tasked with that difficult decision. And I, I think it's important that we maintain, like Measure I promised, our existing services, that we protect our existing staff, and that we are not cutting salaries and benefits. That is the number one thing that we need to protect along with, you know, our, our essential services. But it is, you know, we are going to have to look at either, you know, Measure, Measure C, or other, other funds. So I, I would support sending this to, to Finance Committee. And I think it's, it's worth discussing where the money would go. I, I've heard of, you know, 805 and DOCU Fund, I, I know there's other organizations out there that are also providing direct services to the community. I understand that there may be a perception that we are obstructing justice by funding efforts like the 805 and DOCU Fund. I, I understand where that perception is coming from, but I don't necessarily agree with it at all. Because the 805 and DOCU Fund is doing nothing to obstruct justice. They are literally there observing, informing people of their rights, and making sure that our constitutional rights are not being violated, or if they are, that they are at least documented. And so I, I do think it's worth us considering appropriating money to the DOCU Fund, and if not to the DOCU Fund, we have the fund for Santa Barbara, who has also been out supporting our Latino and immigrant community, and there are others. So I, I definitely don't want to leave this room saying there is no money and there's nobody to appropriate to. Because the money's there, the decision is hard, but the money's there, and there are deserving organizations for it.
Okay, very good. We have two more speakers with the lights on. I want to be mindful of the time, so if we can keep it short, we've got these three items to do, and then we could, wouldn't have to continue this item, we can go ahead and give direction. So with that, Ms. Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to, I'm going to try to bring it around, hopefully, to a motion as it pertains to the funding sources. I will be very brief, I'm just going to make a statement about-
Okay, because I have an addendum for, for Item A before we vote on A. So if you just want to speak to B at this time?
I'll just speak to B if that's okay.
Okay, please do.
In response to our colleagues. I'm, I love the suggestion of a longer conversation about amending Measure C to include human infrastructure, that very much speaks to me. I continue to believe that we need to revise the reserve policy and have for years, it is now urgently necessary we do so. However, there is an immediacy to the allocation that we need to make that really limits our ability to do those things in a timely manner and get this money out the door. So while I, I hear Councilmember Santa Maria what you're saying, that it's the easy way out to look at the flexible funding, flexible housing fund to do this, respectfully, it's really not about ease, it's about expediency. None of the suggestions that have been laid out would be able to see money out the door allocated on the 12th, other than identifying this particular existing pot of money that's a flexible source with a corresponding direction to go to Finance to figure out a way to fill that hole that we've created. I do not want to spend this money, believe me, I fought hard for it. But there is urgency to this action today, and anything that requires us to change a policy will require additional hearings before we can make that allocation. To me, it is vital that we move as quickly as possible to allocate this money. That means taking a risk in the sense that we have to trust one another collectively, that we are making a commitment to fill that hole. I am making that commitment. I am willing to do, willing and, and excited frankly, to do that work that's really been necessary for a long time and to start it at Finance Committee. But let's not hold up this necessary money because we've got a lot of process to do. So I will leave it there, but I would propose that we take the 500,000 from the local, the flexible housing fund with a corresponding direction that Finance Committee return with options to replenish that money.
I'll second that, and I want to make a call-
Sorry, sorry. Just to clarify, that would be direction to staff to return on the 8th of, or the-
It's not a motion.
No, August 12th?
Okay, Mr. Friedman, go ahead.
Well, I, I just wanted to, on that line, clarify just briefly. One, we do need to listen to our, our police chief and what she's saying. There's a lot to it, and we need to make sure that when we have comments up here, that we have, we have all the information, and I think the chief filled in a lot of that. The other thing is in terms of the budget, I'd also, if we can today, if we can't take the action, at least say, give direction to the city administrator to come back with the, with the city finance director to the Finance Committee, not just on where we're going to get this, but the, but how we're going to repay the, the local housing trust fund money. Because if, if it was such a priority, then we had a responsibility as the council during the budget to not fund it out of reserves, because that was always predicated on it being paid back. And then the other part is also directing to Finance, that we look at the entire budget because you saw the numbers, and I'd like that discussion to come back in October at the latest for those. So there's three aspects that we need to get to Finance Committee, but I'm fully in support of what Councilmember Harmon is proposing on where to take the money from now.
And so if I'm hearing, if I'm hearing my colleagues correctly, we are, we are directing Finance Committee to come back with some ideas and proposals, including Finance Director for-
So there's two pieces. What I, what I heard was come back on August 12th with a resolution to appropriate the funds from the flexible housing fund, the 500,000. And then to come back to Finance Committee no later than October to discuss how to replenish that, and also to look at the overall budget in terms of the reserve, prior reserve appropriation and the deficit.
Yes.
All right. Once again, please be mindful, we got a hard stop at 2:15, we want to get through this. Ms. Santa Maria?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a very quick question for our city staff. Allocating money from the reserves, how quick is that?
It's a resolution. Depending on if it, if it's from the contingency reserves, that's something that the council can just pass by resolution.
Okay. I would like to maybe suggest an amendment because we, if we are going to go back to the Finance Committee to figure out how to replenish that money, then we may as well look at replenishing the reserves that we're going to replenish either way?
That was, that was already part of Councilmember Friedman's motion.
But I think, so, sorry, this is where I'm getting a little bit confused, I'm seeking some clarity, because I know Councilmember Harmon mentioned the direction was to pull it out of the housing fund and then send it to Finance Committee to figure out where are we going to replenish for the housing fund and the reserves and everything, right? So instead of sending it to Finance to figure out where do we replenish reserves and the housing fund, why don't we just send it to Finance to figure out where to replenish reserves, period? If we take out the 500K from reserves, we're already looking at a reserve policy-
Because then it adds an additional 500,000 to the deficit.
Right.
So, so then, so basically you're, yeah. I mean, the, it's up to the council members if you want to amend your motion. I mean, the Councilmember Santa Maria has, has said instead of having it come from the housing, but they've, there's a motion on the floor, so I think it's up to them if they want to accept that as a change to the motion.
It's not a motion, is it, Ms. Connect?
It's a motion.
Mr. Mayor, so there was a motion in the second by Councilmember Harmon, and then I do believe that Councilmember Friedman did an amendment to the motion. But procedurally, we should vote on, on the original, on the amendment first, and then on the original motion.
But it's, but we're just giving directions, so would you actually want to-
But it is a motion, right? We need to vote on the motions for a direction to staff. So-
All right.
The council should, should vote on Councilmember Friedman's amendment to Councilmember Harmon's motion. If that passes, then go back to the original motion and vote on that. And then if Councilmember Santa Maria wants a further amendment, you know, that, but that's not clear to me if that is, was a motion that was-
All right, so we need to, first of all, Mr. Clerk, do we have-
And is there a second to Councilmember Friedman's amendment to the motion?
I think Friedman was, oh, the amendment, no.
Yeah.
Which-
So I didn't think we were making, I was just saying, I, I seconded what Councilmember Harmon said, but I was not making an amendment. What I was saying, I wanted just verbal direction, because it gets to come a verbal direction from the staff to just basically, from the council to staff to say, come back to Finance in October on the overall deficit and how we're going to repay the original money for the local housing trust fund. That's a separate thing, but because we have, because we need to do that, I'd like just to do that. So it was an amendment. I fully support what Councilmember Harmon proposed.
So I think we should take action on the original motion by Councilmember Harmon, and then after that, Councilmember Friedman can give further direction to staff on returning to Finance Committee.
So her motion was the 500,000 from the-
Flexible-
Flexible Fund, yeah.
With direction for Finance Committee- Excuse me. With direction for Finance Committee to determine where that, the 500,000 will come from to replace that allocation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Does anybody need to speak to that motion first? Is that what you were, Mr. Jordan, okay?
So since there's a whole bunch of time between now and the 12th of August, that's when that would come back?
Yes.
Wouldn't it also be appropriate to bring back as part of that motion, a plan to structure requests to utilize that funding and what those uses would be for?
We can do that as part of the 12th.
Okay. So my suggestion would be to make that part of the information that would come back to is staff's initial attempt at a draft to say, here's what it would look like, to make a request to us for how much money, for the justification, and what it would be used for.
Confirmed, accepted.
And I'll accept that too as the secondary.
All right. Does anybody else just need to speak to that motion before we vote? Ms. Sneddon?
Yeah, it's, it's to the motion. Since the funds can't yet be allocated until the 12th, I was just wondering, I had a question about speed. So if it was 500,000 from paving, for instance, how quickly could that be? Is that a slower process?
Well, it would have, you'd have to amend probably the Measure C policies first, because the, right now, the Measure C funding priorities do not include that, and then you would have to make a decision on reallocating money.
So that would delay-
Correct.
The money. Okay, so inherent in this motion, I just want to clarify, is the, not the if the 500,000 will be replenished back into that fund, but how?
Correct.
It will be, okay. So inherent in this motion is the promise that it's still, the, the local housing trust fund will have that amount-
It's not being proposed from the local housing trust fund. It's coming, Councilmember Harmon proposed it from the other flexible 1.5 million dollars.
Oh, yes. Full support. Thank you.
But we should still replenish it.
Don't replenish it because we have other needs for those funds, correct?
All right. Mr. Friedman, are you speaking more to the motion? Okay, very good. With that, we have the motion. Does everybody understand the motion?
Okay. I have the motion from Councilmember Harmon, seconded by Councilmember Friedman, as dictated by Councilmember Harmon. Go ahead and vote, please.
Okay, and I'll be opposing it because we snakebbit ourselves in the last budget go-around as far as doing this in the first place, so I'm not sure where this money's going to eventually come from. I know it can primarily come from it, not eventually. Everybody in?
Uh, I think, okay.
Now are you good? Do it again?
I'm going to do it twice.
Yeah. It's like Chicago.
Yeah, maybe a roll call vote.
Very good.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, so it passes 5-2 with Ms. Santa Maria abstaining and the mayor voting no. All right, thank you. So I have something real quick for, we have also A and B, and the first thing we need to do on A is amend that item to say adopt by title only.
Yeah, Ms., Mr. Mayor, thank you. So the, the process would be that the clerk would read the title, then council would vote on whether or not it agrees to waive the full reading of the resolution.
Okay, very good. Would you do that, please, Mr. Clerk, and then I'm going to make a motion and do that when he's done.
Yes, the recommendation is to adopt a resolution condemning aggressive and non-transparent federal immigration enforcement tactics and reaffirming the city's commitment to the California Values Act and to provide a safe and welcoming community for all residents, visitors, and workers.
Okay, and so we need to make a motion to say that we accept it by reading by title only as opposed to reading the entire-
Yes, basically to waive the reading in full.
I'll motion that.
Move by, Freeman second, by Sneddon, would you put the vote up, please? Hmm? Yeah. Just put the vote up, please.
Okay. So the motion is from Councilmember Friedman, seconded by Councilmember Sneddon, to adopt the resolution by title only.
Now, Ms. Connect, that passes unanimously. Do we need to vote on that item again now that it's, did the form it?
Right, correct, yeah. Actually adopting the motion, the resolution.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion. Do you need these items separately, or can we say A and C together?
I would just, they're, on Item C, I think Councilmember Friedman wanted to add a direction to the letter to, on the, the federal legislation as well.
All right, so let's go ahead with Item A, please. Mr., do you have something on Item A, Mr. Jordan?
It's on C.
Okay, yes, let's vote on Item A first, please.
No, we need a motion.
No, we, that was just on the form, adopted by resolution only. Okay, move by, yeah.
Second.
Okay, second by Santa Maria, first by Sneddon, second by Santa Maria.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Sneddon, seconded by Councilmember Santa Maria, to adopt Item A as dictated by staff. Go ahead and vote, please.
Pass unanimously, thank you. Mr. Friedman and-
Just as part of C, I'd like to include that we take a position in support of the Dignity Act and send letters to our congressman and CC, the, all the legislators who signed on to that.
Mr. Jordan, to Item C.
And as part of that also, there were three assembly, state assembly bills mentioned this morning by public speaker, 421, 1108, 49. Don't know anything about them, but could we vet those also and look to adding them if appropriate, or if you have to come back and ask, that would be fine, too.
So that's, that's okay, you do it, Ms. Mc, okay, very good. Then I will entertain, Ms. Sneddon?
Yeah, it's just, it's to that, on our attachment seven, AB 49 is listed, and some of the others, too. So they, they have been vetted with our, our Public Affairs, Townsend Public Affairs and updated in there, too, so we can support those.
All righty. Is everybody aware of the motion then? And with that, I would entertain, with a, yeah, with, so entertain the move, a motion in a second?
I'll, I'll move that.
Second.
Friedman, second by Jordan, the vote, please.
I have a motion from Councilmember Friedman, seconded by Councilmember Jordan, to adopt recommendation C with the changes made by council on the dais. Go ahead and vote, please.
Do you have a question before the vote? Oh. Okay. Pass unanimously, go ahead, Ms. Sneddon, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make sure, I know we're, have a hard stop, and I don't want to rush some of these things. Also mentioned were the continuation of the meetings with members of 805 and DACA Fund and the immigration community, and to keep that conversation and the asks going. We also, there was discussion of partnering with the county, like to continue that, partnering with the county. And then we, we covered today updating the ledge platform, but also on the discussion of education and immigrant resource cards. So I just wanted to very specifically- of education and immigrant resource cards, so I just wanted to very specifically have support for that. And then also the use of city facilities as a possible donation site. That's something we discussed, that we could have donation sites here at City Hall or through Parks and Rec and, and throughout and be helping in that way. So, continuing to think about other ways that we can be using facilities in support of that. And then I'm not sure if that ended up as part of the official motion or not, the officially looking at Measure C, that probably will come up in the Finance Committee, but I just wanted to make sure that that was specifically named, that considering changes to the Measure C allocations, recommendations, that we consider a percentage for human infrastructure.
I don't think that was part of any of the motions.
Might I make that motion now? Or is it not agendized for that?
Can I just say that that's part of the discussion that we would have at Finance, it would naturally be part of that discussion.
That was my assumption, is we would be talking about those.
Well, not naturally, it wouldn't naturally be part of it.
Everything has to come up because we have to look at everything.
Okay, well, that's why I wanted-
You have two members on there who are interested in that.
Well, that was my question, whether it needed to be named specifically or whether I just wanna make sure that that's officially part of the discussion and doesn't continue.
As Chair of the Finance, I'm glad to have that as part of the discussion, I'll just put that out there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, very good. We gotta go. Thank you all for the, it was actually, except for one gentleman, pretty good behavior in tonight, so we appreciate that very much. Thank you, we're adjourned.